This is the City Council meeting of September 29th. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you. Council President. Councilwoman Banks is absent with notice. Councilman Brightwell.
Yes.
Councilman Cruz is absent. Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Councilpro Tim Hicks.
Here.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Also, Mayor Seiver is under the weather and that is why he is absent today as well. If everyone can please rise for the caller guard.
Detail, then, march. Carry your colors. Forward, march. Left, turn. At this time, all uniformed personnel present arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Detail, order arms. Right, turn. Forward, march.
Everyone can be seated. Thank you. All right. At this time, I'd like to call up our fire chief, Chief Thorington, to do a badge pinning and swearing in for some new Southfield firefighter, paramedics, and firefighters. The last Chief Thorington is still getting his feet wet in Southfield but has gone off to a great start. The City Council in the last few meetings have approved purchases of new equipment as well as new ambulances, some fire trucks, rescue apparatus. And that's what, one of the things that we're very good at here in Southfield is making sure that our first responders have what they need to do their job effectively. And it's always nice when we have some new recruits and new firefighters, so we welcome you. And I will turn it over to the chief.
All right. Good evening, Council, families, and guests. Now, this evening, we celebrate an important milestone in the careers of our newest firefighters. A badge pinning ceremony is one of the proudest traditions in the fire service. It represents not only the completion of probation, but also the trust and responsibility that comes with wearing the Southfield Fire Department badge. To our new firefighters, today marks the end of one chapter and the beginning of another. Over the past year, you've been tested. You've been asked to learn, adapt, and perform under pressure. You face sleepless nights, countless drills, and the physical and mental demands that comes with our profession. You've had to prove yourself not just to your officers, but your fellow firefighters, the ones who account on you the most when the tones drop. This badge is more than a piece of metal. It symbolizes commitment, sacrifice, and service. It's a reminder that every day you put the badge on, you carry the weight of the department's reputation and the trust of the community that we protect. To the families here today, thank you. Your support makes us possible. Behind every firefighter is a family that sacrifices just as much. They miss holidays, they miss family events, they spend sleepless nights worrying about their loved one, and the day-to-day challenges that comes with this career. We couldn't do it without them. To our new firefighters, wear this badge with pride. Remember the lessons you learned on probation because it will carry with you the rest of your career. Continue to train, continue to push yourselves, and never forget why you chose this calling, to serve others in their greatest time of need. So congratulations on reaching this milestone. You've earned your place in the Southfield Fire Department. May you have a long, safe, and fulfilling career. And at this time, we'll call them up and we'll pin their badge. Chief? All right. Firefighter Tyler Poff.
I don't know. Tell them they can come around here and take pictures if they want to.
Firefighter Paramedic Eric Kent. Firefighter Matthew Bent. Firefighter Paramedic Mahasan Bazzie. Firefighter Paramedic Timothy Denninger. And firefighter Sadie King. All right. Six of Southfield Fire's finest, welcome.
Yes. You gotta go around. Come, either way, yeah. He said it. He called, Dan, he called it. He called it. He said it.
Okay, I'm gonna swear you in, so please hold up your right hand. And you can repeat after me, and then state your name when I say, "Say your name." Then afterwards, you'll come to this table and sign your certificate. Okay? I do solemnly swear or affirm
Aye.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield.
The City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And I will faithfully
I will faithfully
Perform the duties of the office of firefighter-paramedic Who are the two firefighter-paramedics? And firefighter. And please state your name.
Tyler Poff. Eric. Matthew Bent. Timothy Denninger. Sadie King. Eric Kent.
Thank you. Subscribe and sworn to before me, the City Council, and the City of Southfield this date, September the 29th, 2025. Thank you.
I also want to give a shout out to the families of these firefighters for trusting us. You put your trust in us, and we thank you, and we will make sure that they are taken care of here in the city. And we hope that they come back every evening after every shift, healthy and safe. And again, we thank you for putting yourselves out there, for allowing them to have this job. So again, thank you very much to all the families. Well, to further acknowledge the families, can all the family members please stand and be recognized?
Thank you. That concludes our part.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are some additional seats in the front if anyone who's standing in the back would like to move forward. More, more. Probably close to 60. All right. If I could please have your attention. Next on our agenda are reappointments to our Wildlife Advisory Commission. Councilman Brightwell.
Tonight, on behalf of the Southfield Boards and Commission, which is chaired by me, but we also have members of Mr. Charles Hicks, and we also have Ms. Yolanda Haynes as members of the Southfield Boards and Commission Committee. We will, we are currently reappointing, we have been, we were recommended to be reappointed to the Wildlife Advisory Committee. And if you're here tonight and you are being reappointed to the Wildlife Commission, please come forward, please.
Come forward.
Just right here, that'd be fine. I'll, we will, I will call out the names. Tiffany Gotcher. Ms. Janelle Konstam. Ms. Joel Milenski. And Ms. Jennifer Ormond. Council, I, I'm looking for a motion to reappoint all the individuals whose name, who are named in our agenda, and also the gentleman who's present.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move for the reappointment to the Southfield Wildlife Advisory Commission, Tiffany Gotcher, Janelle Konstam, Joel Milenski, and Jennifer Ormond.
We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to reappoint the four names listed and presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hold on, listen, hold on. We gotta get someone in.
I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
The Constitution of the State of Michigan
The Constitution of the State of Michigan
And the City Charter of the City of Southfield
The City Charter of the City of Southfield.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of the
And I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of the Southfield Wildlife Advisory Commission.
Please say your name, sir.
Joel Milenski.
Faithfully, Mr. Milenski.
Sworn
Before me this day, September the 29th, 2025.
Indeed. Got it? What? This way? To the left? How's life? Joel, thanks for your, always.
Thank you. Always. Someone, actually.
All right. Next, we move on to our presentations for this evening. I'd like to ask Rochelle Freeman, our Business Development Director, to give us an overview of the Corporate Community Cup and present it to our winners.
Yes. Good evening, Honorable Board. We appreciate the opportunity to share a recap of the 2025 Southfield Community Cup Challenge. This is our ninth year for the event, and it was just outstanding. We had 24 companies that participated this year, and we really appreciate the support of the Oakland County Commissioners, Yolanda Charles Smith Charles, and Lenny Taylor, who's not able to be here. They graciously supported our event with a large grant to help underwrite the cost of the entire event. We appreciate that. I'm gonna go over a short presentation, and then we'll award the winner the trophy. I'm gonna, I think, put my glasses on so I can see better. We kicked off our event this summer in conjunction with the city's Eat to the Beat with the Southfield City Center and Parks and Recreation's Eat to the Beat. It was a lot of fun. We were on the front lawn, and we invite everyone to come out and join us for future Eat to the Beat events that we have throughout the summer. Eaton Corporation and Kamau came out big in this event, but I gotta tell you, our City of Southfield team did outstanding this whole, at all of our events. We appreciate everyone's participation. The next event was pickleball. It was a lot of fun. We really enjoyed it, and we went inside because, of course, it was raining on our parade, but we had a great time at paddle and par. Trivia, and you could see the wonderful team of the City of Southfield came in first place. Our IT Department assessing, Michigan Works, and Molly, our Executive Director from the DDA. But Surgeon's Choice, if this gives you a clue, they were the big second-place winner. They did a great job. And the next event was goofy golf. And again, we appreciate all the support that we received from Parks and Recreation for all of our events. But they were very helpful at the golf course at Evergreen Hills. And again, here's some just fun pictures of the event. We had a wonderful kickball event at Ingle Nook, July 24th. The City of Southfield, we came out strong, our police department and some other departments were really, enjoyed participating, but Magna was very dominant in this game. Mix, mingle, and masterpiece was a new addition to the events, and it was a lot of fun, and you could see everyone, you know, out with their creative outpouring there. It was so much fun. Unfortunately, our rain event got canceled, but we're looking for all of our companies to participate in the big rake and some other events throughout Parks and Recreation and throughout the city to help with volunteer efforts. When we added up all the totals, the outstanding company of Surgeon's Choice Medical Center came in first place, and we appreciate them. And come on up, Megan. Get your trophy. Councilman Mandelbaum, would you like to come down and help present the trophy with County Commissioner?
Can you help take pictures? Maybe go over here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, no, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just wanna say thank you to the City of Southfield. This is an event that Surgeon's Choice has participated for the past three years?
Yeah.
Yes, right when they first started. And we, this is a ball. We look forward to it, and can't wait till next year, and thank you so much.
They're stronger for year 10. But again, we do appreciate everyone from the City Council, the Mayor's Office, and all of the city departments that got so involved. It was so much fun this year. We had a great time. And again, thank you.
Council President was kind enough to ask if I just wanted to say and bring a greeting, which I do, Yolanda Smith Charles. Shelley, thank you for reaching out, and that's all it takes, is a reach out, and we would love to do this, Lenny and I, again, in this calendar budget season. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and again, the wonderful PowerPoint presentation was done by our Deputy Business and Business Development Director, Sarah Malali. She's very talented, and we just loved the presentation that she did. Thank you again.
All right, now we're up to our communications portion of our meeting. There are a number of speakers, many of which are on the same topic. When the City Council learned about this, the business that is opening, we immediately spoke with our Planning Director and our City Attorney, and we asked them for some additional information, additional research. They have done that research, and they will give a report prior to communications. So I would like if, please make sure your cellphones are silenced, and please listen carefully. It may help answer some of the questions that you may have during your time to speak. Mr. Crowde?
Thank you, Council President. The retail sales of firearms and accessories.
Terry, can you?
Hello? Can you hear me? Okay. The retail sales of firearms and accessories by the Red Zone Firearms Gun Store is a permitted use in the B3 General Business District zoning classification. The City of Southfield will continue to investigate state and federal laws and regulations regarding the issues raised by community concerns in this matter, and is evaluating available options. Notification was not required because of this use did not
Terry, I'm sorry. Can you maybe go to this mic in the, it may be a little bit easier to hear you.
I'll restate my first statement. The retail sales of firearms and accessories by the Red Zone Firearms Gun Store is a permitted use in the B3 General Business District zoning classification. The City of Southfield will continue to investigate state and federal laws and regulations regarding the issues raised by community concerns in this matter, and is evaluating available options. Notification was not required because this use did not need rezoning, special land use, or even site plan review because it was a permitted use. Therefore, the Planning Commission and City Council were not required to approve the use. We have placed 120-day moratorium on firearm sale establishments and shooting ranges on the agenda tonight for consideration and adoption by City Council this evening to give the Planning Department, Legal Department, Planning Commission, and City Council adequate time to adopt regulations regarding these uses. We are initially proposing zoning regulations that restrict firearm sale establishments and shooting ranges to a limited zoning districts as special land uses, with additional regulations including separation requirements. We further recommend that the community policing meet with the Red Zone Firearms Owner and the, both childcare centers to discuss security and safety concerns. And I'd be happy to address any specific questions that the council may have after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now get into our public communication. We have a number of speakers that signed up. I will read the statement about our rules. I just want to remind everyone, this is our public meeting of the City Council, and we ask that you give respect to all speakers. There should not be any clapping or cheering after each speaker. We just ask that you give respect. I will call up names, two names at a time, because we do have over 60 speakers this evening. So I do want to make sure that we can run this efficiently and give everyone the adequate time to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes. But the Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council. Each speaker is responsible for his or her comments, and the City of Southfield does not, by permitting such remarks, support, endorse, or accept the content thereof as being true or accurate. No speaker may make personal or impertinent No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or City Council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which they perform their duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the City Council. Any person who violates this section may be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly. If a person addressing the council refuses when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace if they continue disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the City Council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future, should it be needed. The council may respond to comments at the end of communications if they are able to do so. Our first speaker is Mikell Brewer, and our second speaker, who should come up and wait, is Sylvia Jordan.
Hello, my name is Michael Brewer. Thank you for your quick action, and thank you for listening to me today. So my daughter goes to the IXL preschool on 12 Greenfield, next to the firearm store in question. And frankly, I think it's unacceptable from a proximity standpoint. I'd like to share some details about the school. It's my understanding that the property line for the school extends into the parking area of the gun store, so it's very conceivable someone would purchase a firearm from the store and then be on school grounds. The primary spot for pickup and drop-off for these kids is in the back parking area. No, it's not an official parking area for the gun store, but IXL has told me that there's a lot of overflow parking that ends up into their lot when that particular structure that the gun store is in gets busy, that they get a lot of people from that particular region parking in their area. Now, during the summer, there's a water play day. The children go out. There's a roped-off area of the parking lot where they're playing. So you can very conceivably imagine someone purchasing, possessing, carrying a firearm feet away from children playing. There's a playground outside, again, feet away from children playing. There's another playground for the Baby Genius School that's right next door to IXL. I question the legality of possessing a firearm in the public spaces next to these schools and in the school property. And I'll close with this. I have an older child who's in elementary school. And once a month, there's a police car parked out of the elementary school. I know why it's there. I'm sure you do, too. It's there as a deterrent to gun violence in schools. And for the rest of that day, me and my wife are filled with dread. And I would say this. From now on, every day, I'm going to see in big, red, bold letters firearms when I drop my daughter off at school. Every day, I'm going to feel that same dread I feel once a month. Except it's going to be every day. It would be an error to leave the store here. Let's not put the parents and the teachers of this community through that same kind of dread every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. After Sylvia Jordan, is next is Carlton Ors. Please make your way up.
Good evening, Council. My name is Sylvia Jordan, and I've been a daycare provider in the City of Southfield for over 27 years. Wife, mother, grandmother. And I am just alarmed that a gun store would be going next to two childcare centers. You know, guns just don't belong next to children. And even recently, the City of Berkeley, within the last year, they were dealing with this issue. And I would have thought that the City of Southfield would be a little bit more proactive as opposed to reactive. And this is a leadership issue, failed leadership, to see what's happening in neighboring communities and be on top of this potential business coming to the City of Southfield next to children. No guns next to kids. Families are at risk. It sends a wrong message about Southfield's values. In addition, I've been walking the neighborhoods from Southfield Road to Pebble Creek to Greenfield Civic Center to Nine Mile, and residents of all incomes, color, and religion are reporting flooding and sewage backup. And this is still happening as recently as two weeks ago. This is a health and a safety crisis, and it's not acceptable. So my question is, what are we going to do to fix this problem that impacts so many Southfield residents? And too many of our seniors, even in city-owned buildings, are facing flooding issues and even living in deplorable conditions. These are many people who built Southfield and made Southfield home, and they deserve dignity, not neglect. So lastly, Southfield must do better with our children, our families, and our seniors. It is time for real change in leadership and priorities. Southfield's children, families, seniors deserve protection, not neglect. If we keep doing the same old things, we're going to be getting the same old results. And I believe it's time for change, and time for change now. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ann Ors, and then Carlton Ors.
Yeah. Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Okay, my name is Ann Clark Ors. I've been a Southfield homeowner for more than 30 years, and I'm the owner of Baby Genius Learning Center located at 15750 West 12 Mile in Southfield. I am extremely disturbed that a gun shop is opening next to our two centers. I had no idea that this was in the works until it came to my attention when the gun shop signage went up last week. I am a former educator. I've spent many years as a public school teacher. I hold a bachelor's degree in education and a master's degree in special education. As a childcare provider, I'm committed to providing the best experiences possible, not only for the children that I love and care for, but for all of the children in our community. Children's early experiences from birth to five direct their lives as their brains grow and develop. We owe it to the children to provide positive experiences and make positive impressions during these formative years. Our children deserve better than to see a gun shop right next to their school. I don't object to illegally operated gun shop. My objection is to its location next to schools. As adults, we have a moral obligation to do our best for kids who rely on us to speak for them when they do not yet have the ability to do so on their own. I stand here on behalf of our children with the full support of my parents and my staff. This gun shop needs to be relocated. Its opening at this location needs to be stopped, and we need your help to make this happen. You are my elected officials. You have power to make change. Changes need to be made to Southfield's ordinances and zoning so that this will not ever be a concern in the future. A business license for this gun shop at this location should never have been issued. As to the leaders of Southfield, we implore you to do better, a better job of getting in front of issues like this. I say this because I've learned that a year ago in our neighboring community of Berkeley, they had the same issue, and parents came out and spoke against it, and the gun shop owner conceded and did not open. When this became an issue right next door in Berkeley, it was an opportunity for Southfield to review its own ordinances and zoning so that the issue that was created there could not be created here, next to our schools. Moving forward, Southfield needs to do a better job at paying attention to the municipalities around us and their issues before they become our issues.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next is Carlton Ors. After that is Michael Morrison.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlton Ors. I live at 20320 El Hamba Street. 38-year resident in Southfield, starting in 87. For disclosure, Ann Clark is my wife. Okay, so I have a vested interest here. I won't be as eloquent as she is. For too long, there's been too many quality life changes that have occurred since 87, and unfortunately, not for the better. Southfield is on the verge of becoming a decadent city, characterized by steady state of moral and cultural decline. This is partly attributed to a dereliction of duty by Southfield's administration council. I will point to September 2024, when our next-door neighbor, City of Berkeley, had a similar problem when the gun shop opened near its school. Again, September of last year. The similar problem generated massive regional and national TV coverage, newspaper articles, and social media posts. This outcry did not originate from faraway communities like in Sheboygan, Esconabe, Marquette, and the UP. This was right next door. How could you not know about it? I've spoken to multiple former Southfield elected officials and staff and some other surrounding communities, and they were quite aware of the same situation in Berkeley. And they felt, they were just made in disbelief that you guys act like you didn't know about it. But that type of lack of proactiveness exhibited by Southfield has given Berkeley the same situation from last year. Frequently, the terms "misfeasance" and "nonfeasance" are applicable. Misfeasance, more about unknowing negligence or plain incompetency. The term "nonfeasance," failure to act, especially the failure to do something that should have been done, resulting in harm or damage. Both of these things are front and center right now. There's only one course of action beyond the obvious of shuffling papers to tighten up future zoning laws, license permits, and code enforcement. I'm not sure if they're going to do anything for us, the guy being grandfathered in. But the easy action, the one required course, is to delay the opening of Red Zone Firearms and shop until he finds another acceptable location. Find a way to help pay for that. Perhaps maybe elected officials will contribute X amount of dollars. Make sure he has money to move. But this cannot be right here, not now. Do the right thing and find him another location. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Morrison. After him, it's Dennis Clark.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Michael Morrison, and I came, I'm speaking on a different issue. I came before the Neighborhood Concern Committee regarding a resident, well, what used to be a residence at 17270 Alta Vista Place. It was once a residence, and it has since been converted into some type of meeting hall, which, as a result of the last meeting I was at, I was informed that is clearly an ordinance violation that such a business has to be located on the main thoroughfare and have adequate parking, which Alta Vista Place is neither. And the parking, this business that's being operated has become not only a nuisance to us residents, but also a safety concern because when they have these meetings, they park in such a way that they block the fire hydrant. They park on both sides of the street so that not only emergency vehicles, but we can't get through to our own homes. And I would just like for this council to take some action based on the results that were presented at that committee meeting. Otherwise, it's like it's a waste of time to even have them when clearly this business is in violation, but it's still being allowed to operate. And they're doubling down by over paving the property. They have a driveway leading up to the property that's three cars wide. And now, as I speak, the backyard is being paved with concrete. So none of us moved into this community thinking that we were going to be living across the street from a meeting hall. And again, it's not only a nuisance, but it's a safety hazard because of the blocking of the fire hydrant, parking on both sides of the streets so that vehicles can't get through. And the people, not all the people, but there have been incidents where patrons of the business have been threatening to the residents that live there to the tune, to the extent that charges have been filed against one of the patrons that frequents there. So we need some action to be taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Dennis Clark, and after him is Jay Reed.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Clark. I'm a 38-year resident of Southfield. My wife and I, in 1987, saw Sherwood Village as an ideal place for us to live our retirement in. But it has since been modified due to the existing of this particular pseudo synagogue on Alta Vista. They park on both sides of the street. They disrespect the laws of the city. In fact, there's a state law that indicates that there's a 30-foot limit to parking within a stop sign. I myself have complained to the Police Department, blocking my driveway, and it's a danger. The Fire, the Police Department, they have turned a blind eye to my complaints, refused to issue tickets. Secondarily, I am the father of my daughter, who owns the nursery on 12 Mile Road, and I'm in total support of her and her husband in operating their nursery school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jay Reed. After Jay is Peter Chamberlain.
Good evening. My name is Jay Reed. I want to thank you for the opportunity for me to be able to speak in front of the residents as well as the local officials here today. I am coming before you to announce a candidate forum that will be taking place at the Adler Elementary School October 23 at 6:00 p.m. This effort will be led by hashtag BeTheOneStudio, and it's a platform driven to unite our communities, spotlight individuals and organizations that are making a positive impact, not just in Southfield, but around metro Detroit. It drives a narrative and a nurturing space for youth and young adults. Earlier this year, we were able to secure over $50,000 in grassroots donations to save or to help serve the over 700 individuals and families that were forced and displaced from their homes due to the water main break in southwest Detroit this past February. From there, we've done a number of initiatives, but this is just one of many. Now, we are educating residents, also younger generations, to get them registered to vote and properly prepare them to vote for the upcoming general election, wherever they live, whether it's Southfield or elsewhere. So the candidate forum, if you all see it, it has gone out to all the candidates, and it is available to the residents in the lobby as well. For more information, you can see me after the meeting or meet with our team. We have partnered with the Southfield Public Schools to host this at the Adler Elementary School. And if we remember, it was scheduled to close some years ago, but it still stands because of the ringing voices of the community. 2023, our right to vote was threatened with a ballot initiative. Now, in 2025, our children are being put in harm's way. Someone isn't listening, so it's time for us to pay attention and educate ourselves. So residents, candidates, hope to see you October 23, 2025, at Adler Elementary. Thank you so much.
Peter Chamberlain, and after that is Sean Spanbauer.
Good evening. I come before you as a parent at IXL Berkeley. I know that you all have a hard job. I appreciate that. It is a thankless job a lot of the time. It is a thankless job a lot of the time. I understand how the zoning fell through in this case, and I would encourage the support of the moratorium. I would be curious to know how involved the landlord was, and who in their right mind thought, gun store, daycare, this seems like a good idea. I would question that, because, like peanut butter and mustard, kids and guns don't mix. So I encourage you fully to adopt the moratorium. And I ask you to just, just ask yourself a couple of questions. How many of you, and you don't have to raise a hand, you don't have to, you just ask yourself rhetorically, how many of you have lost, have lost someone due to a firearm? How many of you have lost two? How many of you have lost three? How many of you have taken part in an active shooter drill? How many of you have children who have taken part in an active shooter drill? The best time to have acted would have been before this. Unfortunately, we don't have time travel. I empathize. But now is the next best time. So I encourage you wholeheartedly to do the right thing. Thank you very much.
After Sean is Daniel Barkley.
Good evening. My name is Sean Spanbauer of Royal Oak. Uh, my son is one of the children that attends the daycare on Twelve Mile Road. Uh, I just wanted to comment on the gun store, red-zone firearms, that's currently under construction with an expected opening in the upcoming weeks. I'm concerned about the proximity of guns literally feet from my son and his little friends. Well, I'm not gonna pretend that guns don't exist. Putting a gun store next to a daycare normalizes them to children at a time when their brains are forming. I think effectively advertising them. Laws were put in place, limiting the advertising of cigarettes and alcohol to children using similar logic. I'm asking that the city council consider anything that they can to prohibit the store from opening, and consider pushing through local zoning changes to prohibit gun stores from opening near daycare centers in the future. I just wanted to know, what am I supposed to do as a father if I see somebody walking around with a firearm outside of my son's daycare? Nothing? I mean, yesterday, grand blank, a, a soft target was hit, right? We all know that. So, so nothing doesn't sound like a good answer. Am I supposed to call the police every time I see someone walking around outside with a firearm? May, maybe, that's, that's an okay answer. Something more along the fight-or-flight response? I don't know. Like, what is the expect, expectation of a father? Guns and kids don't mix, and we've gotta figure out a way to shut this down.
After Daniel, we have Valerie Johnson.
Appreciate your time. I'm Daniel Barkley. Uh, my children have attended IXL since we moved to Pinewood Manor six years ago. I was as surprised as anyone as we saw the gun shop owning, opening up. What I'm here is to ask the city council this for time. Others have said this more eloquently than I will, but if it sounds like everything was legal up to this point, then this is an opportunity to change from this point on, to pause the opening so that we can assess this. The only thing that I can see that will happen is that this will guarantee that guns are on IXL property. Anytime anyone legally uses that business, there will be guns on the property, as was said, that is used for the children for playing. Sorry that I'm upset. I was in education for over a decade. I led kids through safety drills, through all of these, and had to explain to high schoolers what it meant to lock down, what it meant to fight or flight, what we would do in those circumstances. And now, I get to imagine telling that to my four-year-old daughter every day as we see that gun store. So what I ask is for time, so that we can make a common sense decision for our children, for the employees, for all of the, all these people that were here under, in the best, in, in, trying to do what was best for their kids, for their jobs, and so on, uh, so that at least from going forward, we can, uh, do what's right. Thank you.
After Valerie, we have Colin Blumenthal.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and address the council. My name is Valerie Johnson, and I live on the corner of Primary and Matrit. I have been a resident of Southfield since two thousand sixteen. I built a home from the ground up in the beautiful Pebble Creek, taking occupancy in two thousand eighteen. From the time of moving into my beautiful home, I have had major complaints. The first one is large holes on Matrit because of the huge construction that keeps going back and forth on that road, leaving holes and no repair. Right now, I call it the zebra that sits at my door. The second is cars speeding down out of control sometimes on that same side street, as well as Pebble Creek Parkway, which is a major street. Neat, I say, the homes over there are selling for over four hundred, close to a half a million dollars. Noise of racing cars on the side street at various times, even in the wee hours of the morning, which I'm up because of the noise. Vandalism, breaking in our cars, and should I say, city services, no snow removal, trash being picked up at eleven P.M. at night. Cans being two now in my home. One, when I first moved in, I had to purchase, and a second one, when you decided to change the company. So I have two garbage cans without any way to dispose of it. Seven, high-growing ga, uh, grass on the city property lines. And can't stop this one, homeless people now being tempted to come into the neighborhood, maybe because we have too many gas stations, a car wash, and a lot of fast food residence, restaurants. The issue I'm here for today is not those in particular, but the one I'm here for is because now I found out that my sewage system is connected to an apartment building, which this last week had the, they tore people out. And now, my finished basement, over forty thousand dollars, has been demolished. I spoke to the engineers that happened to be in my neighborhood on this day, being the last day of them remediation of my place in the basement, cleaning it up. And I said, hey, what's going on? They said, it's the apartment building across the street that you're connected to. My sewage system in a subdivision is connected by the authority and approval of this administration of city engineering, maybe. I'm not gonna blame anybody, but something's wrong. Now, I'm not gonna go with any more minutes, but I need answers. That's all I'm asking for, answers.
Thank you. After Colin, we have Bridget.
Hello. My name is Colin Blumenthal, and I'm here as both a concerned parent and a member of this community. I strongly urge you to reject the proposal to approve a firearm store immediately adjacent to IXL Learning Center, the daycare that my children and many others in our community attend. First and foremost, the proximity of a firearms retailer to a children's facility presents a direct risk to the safety and well-being of our youngest and most vulnerable residents. Daycares are meant to be a place of trust, security, and learning, not within steps of a business whose core function involves the sale and storage of deadly weapons. Second, the presence of such a store undermines parents' confidence in sending their children to IXL. Families choose daycare centers not just for their quality education, but also for a safe environment. Approving this proposal would force many of us to reconsider whether our children can remain enrolled, causing disruption not only to families, but also to the viability of the daycare itself. Additionally, there are community-wide considerations. Research consistently shows that higher concentrations of firearms in a community correlate with higher risk of accidents, theft, and violence. Situating a gun store next to a building filled with toddlers and preschoolers is simply incompatible with the responsibility we all share to safeguard our children. I recognize the business owner have rights, but so too do our families, who expect our city to exercise common sense in planning decisions. Certain types of businesses are simply inappropriate near schools and childhood, childcare facilities. This firearm store is one of them. In conclusion, approving, approving this proposal would compromise public safety, destabilize a trusted childhood center, and send a troubling message about our city's priorities. I respectfully ask that you place the well-being of our children first and deny this application. Thank you for your time and consideration.
After Bridget, we have Oliver Thompson.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Bridget Marley, and I'm a Berkeley resident and a City of Southfield business owner. Um, thank you for allowing us a chance to speak. I stand here carrying the voices of parents, teachers, and the community members who are tired of living in fear. Communities, schools, churches are now the places with targets on their backs because they've been victims of mass shootings. Our united voices are because we don't trust gun manufacturers, lobbyists, retailers, or advocates. Why? Because not one of them stands with us for change in gun laws, not one. And instead of supporting meaningful gun reform to protect citizens from violence, they continue to look the other way. Their silence is deadly. I was one of the people in the City of Berkeley who helped orchestrate a community outcry to stop the gun store from opening. And it was by the grace of that business owner and that retail space owner to move away from the plan to open that gun store. They heard our voices. City Council of Berkeley acted swiftly to make changes to their zoning. And so I hope you hear us, and I hope the business owner hears us. Thank you.
After Oliver Thompson, we have Alex Lang.
Good evening. I hope you can hear me. Um, I first learned of the gun store opening about a month ago. My wife was reading the Sun, uh, Southfield Sun, and she said, you know, they're opening a gun store right next to the gun store where our granddaughter goes. Riley, her name is Riley, is eleven months old. She doesn't know what a gun is or a gun store, but I would hate for her to grow up in an environment where gun possessions, gun ownership, a gun presence is, is normalized. I heard a gentleman say earlier, the gentleman here who spoke, I believe, on the planning commission, said there was no notification required, uh, for the issuing of the license. I would like to think that from a citizen's standpoint, from the standpoint of the interested parents, the business owners, that that should have been a requirement. So I'm here to say to you that I'm absolutely against that gun store being there, and I would like to think that those who, uh, approved the license would have put the interests of our community ahead of the interest of that business. Thank you.
After Alex, we have Tawana Morris.
Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Alex Lang. I live at twenty-three-fifty-nine Thomas Ave in Berkeley, near the intersection of Twelve Mile and Greenfield Road. My family moved to Berkeley just three months ago for the safe neighborhood, quality schools, and the surrounding close-knit community. My two-and-a-half-year-old daughter Delaney attends IXL on Twelve Mile Road. I'm here to oppose red-zone firearms, opening a store in the same complex, less than a hundred feet away from the IXL and Little Genius daycare centers, and sharing a parking lot. I understand the reason this was approved, due to the current zoning rules and laws. I also understand that there are discussions to modify those zoning laws so a firearm store cannot open near a daycare in the future. However, the current rules have already permitted this undeniable oversight. It's clear that the city understands the safety issues here and takes them seriously, as evidenced by comments at the conclusion of last week's meeting and before this discussion tonight. However, the actions discussed so far are not enough. The families at IXL and Little Geniuses don't deserve to just be the catalyst for this change. Our children's safety must be considered as well. That's why I'm also here to urge the City of Southfield to support the owner of Red Zone Firearms and his relocation efforts so he can successfully run his business in an appropriate location. I don't fault the owner of Red Zone for trying to run a business that he believes in. I do, however, fault the oversight that rests on his shoulders and the city's for allowing the situation to occur. Anytime during this approval process, this should have been contested. It should have made someone stop and scratch their head, considering the potentially harmful situation and the backlash that it's now caused, that we're all seeing right now. While legally compliant, any moral person can see the reasons that this is so wrong. I do believe, excuse me, the risk of guns, uh, sorry. I do believe the owner of Red Zone intends to follow all rules and regulations related to gun laws and sales. He has too much to lose if he doesn't. However, there are simply too many factors that are out of his control. There are people everywhere who pass background checks and are able to purchase weapons who shouldn't be able to, who have shown no warning signs of mental illness or troubled pasts, and they may go on to cause gun violence. I don't need to go into detail of the countless instances in this last week of gun violence, the last twenty-four hours. The risk of gun violence is everywhere, but a firearm shop within a hundred feet of two daycare centers brings that risk to the presence of the most vulnerable, basically defenseless group, infants, toddlers, and preschoolers. If Red Zone Firearms opens at its current location, you are allowing the potential of pure, absolute devastation. You have the moral obligation to minimize the risk of violence in the community you serve, especially for our children. I urge all parties to take moral corrective action to remedy this. The families of IXL and Little Geniuses deserve the peace to know their children are safe at school. I'm almost done, I apologize. Knowing that guns being purchased and carried to the parking lot just outside the doors of their classrooms within sight of their playground, I have ten seconds. IXL doesn't deserve to be the daycare next to the gun shop.
Um, after Ms. Morris, we have the Hudron family.
Good afternoon, City Council of Southfield. Uh, I would like to yield at least a minute to our President of the Brady Group, Millie Hall.
You're, you cannot yield your time. You have to speak, I'm sorry.
My name is Tawana Morris, and I live in the City of Detroit. I am a member of our Brady Group. Millie Hall is the President of the State of Michigan for the Brady Group. I'm here to, as an investigator bonded by the State of Michigan, a retired Detroit police officer who's done many investigations around our state. The situation that we're in today, our children deserve a life. Our children need our safety. We need our children safe. So please, on behalf of our citizens of the State of Michigan, as well as your citizens in Southfield, we do not need guns. We do, in, right next door to our children. Let our children have a life to live. They deserve safety, the best safety that you can provide. Thank you.
Is the, I believe it's the Hudron family? Is the, I believe it's the Hudron family? Are they, are they here? Okay. I'm sorry I'm gonna mispronounce this name, Cal Fani.
Good evening. My name is Cal Fani. I'm a MC writer and organizer. I work with the group Black Convergence, which is a coalition of students, alumni, and community members based around metro Detroit. I want to also, before I get started, hold a space for the parents who are concerned here, but this is a separate issue. I'm coming to reinforce the information that was said previously about the youth forum that'll be taking place at Adler on the 23rd. Personally, in my experience, I attended the forum by the League of Women Voters, and a community member inserted a question about what the city could do for, you know, voters between the ages of 18 and 35. And I was kind of mortified when I heard the mayor's response because he said we have field zone, and field zone is for 10-year-olds. But it just, it shows us that there's a big disconnect between those of us in the community that would like to do things and those who may have the power to have things done. So this forum is an opportunity for us to bridge that gap, have some clarity, and have some unity between those of you who are in office, of course, those members of the council, those running for city clerk, and our two mayoral candidates who want to be heard, and the community, specifically those voters between the ages of 18 and 35 who would like to be heard. If you guys are okay with it, could I please come around and pass out these flyers to you all?
You can hand it to the city planner, help make sure we got copy.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Yvonne Malinsky, and after that would be Joel Malinsky.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Yvonne Malinsky. I am vice chair of the Southfield Public Arts Commission. And as a citizen of Southfield for close to 40 years, I've been very passionate about how our city reflects itself to each other in a beautification way, in an awareness way. And I have to say, I was absolutely shocked and traumatized when I saw the firearms sign on that forthcoming store. And I would just like to say briefly, if we are going to have a moratorium on this, like a pause, hit a pause button, could we please take down that sign? It's very traumatizing, and I don't want the little children to see that. And their minds, like so many educators and ex-police officers have said, it makes an impression. And this is not the impression that we want to give to our children and our citizens in the city of Southfield and, you know, beyond. We're right at the corner there of 12 Mile and Greenfield. There's a lot of traffic, a lot of people go by, and of course their heads are gonna pivot and look at that horrible, you know, sign with all the, you know, all the images that it brings and the trauma that it can cause a lot of our citizens. We've been through a lot in Michigan. So I would just like to ask if you could take down the sign while you decide in your better judgment, and I know you will, that this just does not fit in our community. Thank you.
After Joel, we have Nicole Miro.
I was really hoping I could lunch on one minute left from my wife, as we went from wild wife and wild life. I have to agree with the issue of appearance. I think really that's what we're talking about, the appearance. Being an arts commissioner, how things look and how we feel is very important. So clearly, this was a mistake. Red Zone just brings haunting thoughts of every splatter, blood, horror movie I think I've ever stayed away from. Now, choices to carry weapons are choices. I had a choice to live on the northern Lebanese border where firearms were offered to me because it was what you used to go to work. I'm not living there. I'm living here, in this wonderful community with such proactive and clever and involved citizens. And obviously, this has struck a chord of appearance. My issue is another more, far more mundane appearance issue, as I was given a letter advancing into a citation because of a car that wasn't moving in my driveway, because a car cannot be stored in your driveway, and I don't know exactly what the ordinance is for that, but I live in Cranbrook Village, and I'm certain that there are a large number of automotive workers, active, retired, hobbyists, and owning a silly car and keeping it on your driveway, operationally and licensed and covered, is what we do as hobbyists, adventurers, automotive workers. And I can't understand why I was threatened with a citation because I wasn't moving my car that was covered, licensed, and insured every 45 hours, which is, I don't know what the ordinance is, but a working car should be allowed to be parked in my driveway. It's mine, it's operational. I can't drive it all the time. So I don't know what the issue was. My neighbors have, we have silly cars, we're Detroiters, we have silly cars. Some are more silly than others, but they are collectibles, and they're enjoyed, and they're kept on their driveways. And I don't understand what the issue is with that. And I think it'd be really great to see if we can find out exactly how many ex- and current automotive workers are living, paying taxes in Southfield, and they should be able to keep their cars in their driveway, covered, protected, and not having to be moved every 48 hours, according to what I was understanding the ordinance was. This is not as critical as the red zone, which I think is really a problem, be interesting how that happened, where this gun shop will move great open spaces on telegraph, not near schools, to my knowledge. Thank you very much. By the way, everyone here is great.
Please address the council. After Nicole, we have Joe Buckley.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Miro, and I'm a parent of a four-year-old daughter and a two-year-old son who attend IXL daycare, just steps away from Red Zone Firearms. I know what it means to entrust their safety to others, and I never imagined I'd have to stand up here arguing against placing a retail gun store next to a daycare. Let me be absolutely clear. Placing a gun business next to a daycare is not just irresponsible, it's dangerous. We are talking about putting a business that sells deadly weapons next to a building full of babies, toddlers, and preschoolers. Their safety, their innocence, and their right to a secure environment should be non-negotiable. Gun stores by their very nature carry inherent risks, risks of theft, accidental discharge, and potential violence. These are not hypothetical concerns, they are documented realities. And now we're being told that these risks are somehow tolerable next to a building full of babies and young children? That's absolutely unacceptable. Here's a fact we cannot ignore: firearms are now the leading cause of death for children and teens in the United States. And yet we are placing the very weapons responsible for that statistic directly next to children we claim to protect. How could anyone justify that? It is deeply disappointing that the landlord would approve a lease for a gun retailer next to a daycare, and even more troubling that the business owner believes this is an appropriate location. Just because it's legal does not make it responsible, it doesn't make it safe, and it certainly does not make it ethical. This is about common sense and community responsibility. There are countless other locations where this business could operate without putting our children in harm's way. Why choose the one place where the consequences of a single mistake could be catastrophic? We urge you, city leaders, property managers, and decision-makers to reconsider this lease. Listen to the voice of the parents, educators, and neighbors. Prioritize the safety of our children over profit, because once something goes wrong, it will be too late to say we should have done something. Thank you.
All right, after Joe Buckley, we have Greg Keeler.
Good evening. My name is Joe Buckley. I just want to first thank for the time and thank for the opening of this meeting. It is heartening to see our public servants being sworn in to serve to honor our constitution of our city, our state, and our nation. I'm a father of two young kids. One of them is still learning how to get to the potty in time, the other is learning how to write her name. Both of them go to daycare, and that sits next to the property where a gun shop is about to open. I've taught civics in one of Chicago's toughest neighborhoods. I know what the Second Amendment is, I respect it, I understand its history, but I also know what fear does to a community, I know what it does to a teaching staff, I know what it feels like to lead lockdown drills or stand on the corner during dismissal to help discourage violent nonsense. I also want to acknowledge that the owner of the shop says the significant demographic of the customers are victims of domestic violence. I deeply appreciate those in such a situation and deeply desire them to find safety as well. That said, I'm here not as a legal expert, political operative, but as a parent who's lied awake, wondering about some unfortunate and scary scenarios. What if something goes wrong at that store? What if there's a theft? What if there's a mistake? What if a conflict in the parking lot? What if the unimaginable occurs, just feet from where my children are learning to feel safe in the world? What if a customer goes through following the law exactly as they should, and then the day comes where unfortunately decide, this is how I'm going to feel seen in the world? I don't mean to be overly dramatic or scary, but we've seen enough of that in the news right now that it's not an outside risk. This shop does not belong here, not besides children, not beside amazing caregivers, not in a space that's supposed to be about innocence, protection. I'm asking you as parents, neighbors, public servants, to step back and ask, is this the best we can do? Something to prevent this from happening in the future? I know that the law doesn't currently prevent this, but leadership is not about an easy or automatic answer. It's about using your voice, your authority, maybe even your leverage, to make things right. I'm heartened to hear the idea about police cooperation for security in the space, but I would like to see something to do to stop or move the business. Please find a way, be creative, use your authority, use your power over business operators and landowners to please protect my children and their absolutely wonderful teachers. Let's not risk one of those scary scenarios from becoming a reality. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. After Greg Keeler, we have Betty Robinson.
It is fascinating to me that we have a gun-free zone for schools, but we don't have a gun-free zone for daycares. You have to be 1,000 feet away from a school, but you can be right next to a child. It makes no sense. Federal law says you must not come within 1,000 feet. So if there's a store there and you carry the gun out of the store, you are in violation of federal law. So you are in violation if you buy a gun at that store and walk out of it. Do y'all even know that? Berkeley had the same situation. That's why, the reason why it got shot down, because they were within 1,000 feet. Now, you were asked a question, and I asked a long time ago, why are y'all reactive to everything else, not proactive? You have a charter that is 60 years old that says you gotta get out your driveway or we don't give you a ticket, but you don't care about kids. I had never expected to come home and get a phone call saying that next door to my child's daycare center from Michael Brewer, they are selling guns. This is just totally utterly ridiculous. Common sense should have told somebody that was appointed that that shouldn't be there. But we can see that there's a problem also with your appointments and your choices of who should be on boards and everything else. Makes no sense. Change the 60-year-old charter, change some of your ordinance so they fit to now, to right now where residents are living. But if nothing else, y'all have made the news and everything else, and they had two or three hours on TV about a shooting at a church. So should we be next? Or have you thought about it? And like they said, have you thought about the image that this city is now projecting with having this? This should never have been, never have been, even a thought. A child, I couldn't imagine my grandchild being next to someplace like that. Were any of y'all down at Greenfield, two miles from there at Kroger's, when they brought the shotguns in there? And walking around, because they could walk around and open carry? I was in the store, shocking and frightening that you walk around with a gun. And that's what should be said to some of the people up here that can't make up their mind. Time is up.
After Betty Robinson, we have Lindsay Walsh.
Good evening. I am Betty Robinson. I'm here tonight to get an update on issues like I presented about a month ago, preferably the park updates. Ingonook Park, when will you remodel the bathroom? And when will you update the track? Beechwood, there's trash in the sandbox, kids cannot play in it, there's trash in the entire park. When would that be cleaned up? My second issue is unused cars and driveway in my neighborhood, cars with no Michigan license plate, I brought that to your attention, nothing still has been done about that. Also, there's, the house is on Potomac that I mentioned to you, that was in disarray and an embarrassment to the neighborhood. It was a foreclosure, and I called the owner, and he pretended that all the repairs were done. Not, not so. The house is ridiculously, it's in bad shape. So somebody need to talk to the owner and get him started on the repairs on that house. We do not want that house in our neighborhood as an eyesore. We've had the best neighborhood in Southfield over 25 years. We've never had police come to our neighborhood, recently we have. We need that fixed. On Virginia, I don't know, this is a group home. That home was listed two months ago at $359,000, and we understand that it was sold for $329,000. There's a mother and four daughters living there. Every night, neighbors call me and tell me about us fighting in the yard, and it's just ridiculous. They're knocking on neighbors' doors, you know, running, the girls. And today, yesterday, I was coming from church, and I happened to drive through the neighborhood. The mother flagged me down and told me to call the police on her daughter. Her daughters were, she had fought with her daughters. That is an issue. We don't want that kind of going on in our neighborhoods. It's ridiculous, and I don't think the lady, the house is hurt. It may be a group home. Can you please check on that to see if it's a group home? Also, I wish I have a question about Leonard School. Has any updates been down on that? Who's, when is that gonna be occupied? It's still an eyesore. And also, I just want to ask the council members, do you visit any of the facilities in Southfield? The homes, their parks, and whatever, anything you approved, do you visit? Because when I was on the school board, as a school board member and president, I visited every school in Southfield because I was an elected official, and that was my sworn duty. Do you do that? I think you should.
After Lindsay Walsh, we have Reverend Chris Yaw.
Good evening, council members. My name is Lindsay Walsh. My four-year-old son is a student at IXL daycare, and I'm here to express why opening a firearm shop next to a daycare is not in the best interest of our community, our families, and most importantly, our children. First and foremost, the safety and well-being of young children always must come first. A daycare is a place where parents trust that their children are nurtured, protected, and free from unnecessary risks. Placing a gun shop immediately next door directly undermines that trust. And even if the business follows all legal requirements, the very presence of firearms so close to a childcare center increases anxiety for families and introduces risks that simply do not belong in a child-focused environment. Second, perception matters. Parents must feel secure when they drop their children off each morning. Seeing customers entering and leaving a gun shop, possibly carrying weapons, creates fear and discomfort that may lead families to withdraw their children from IXL. This not only affects the families directly, but also, could also threaten the viability of IXL Berkeley, which is an essential service in our community. Third, common sense must play a role in this discussion. It is difficult to comprehend how the business owner of Red Zone Firearms could view opening a firearm store directly next to a daycare as even remotely appropriate. A childcare facility represents security, trust, and a peace of mind, while a firearm store, by its very nature and by definition, introduces concerns and anxieties that directly conflict with those values. To place these two side by side is simply not questionable, it is fundamentally incompatible. The question is not whether a firearm business can operate lawfully in our city, the question is where such a business belongs, and next to a daycare should never be the answer. As a full-time working mom, I can confidently say, my to-do list does not read, drop off the dog to get groomed, grab my child from daycare, and stock up on guns and bullets in one fell swoop. We as a community must ask, what values do we want to promote? Daycare should be surrounded by spaces that encourage growth, play, learning, and safety. Parks, schools, libraries, family-friendly businesses. Firearm shop does not align with those values and the intended character of a childcare environment. Allowing it next door would send the wrong message about our priorities for our children and their future. This is not an argument against lawful firearm ownership or businesses operating responsibly, it is simply about appropriate location. A gun shop next to a daycare is not compatible, and our children deserve better. For these reasons, I am here to respectfully ask the council to support relocating Red Zone firearms, one that supports our business goals while ensuring that our community's children remain in the safest possible environment. And lastly, to the owners of Red Zone Firearms, shame on you, sir.
Please, please hold your applause. After the Reverend, we have Jason Schwink. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
Well, good evening, honorable board. It's nice to see you again. I'm Reverend Chris Yaw, and for the last 18 years, I have served as the rector at St. David's Episcopal Church here in Southfield. We're located at 16200 West 12 Mile Road. It's less than a half mile from this firearm store in question, and like the 18 other people you've heard from before me, I stand in opposition to this store opening in this place and time and support the moratorium that will be proposed tonight. Just yesterday, as you know, and has been alluded to, just 50 miles up the road in Grand Blank, a man with a gun, perhaps resembling a gun that would be sold at this store, was likely purchased from a gun store, perhaps resembling this store, and it was then used by a man to murder and injure dozens of people at a church. Any idea how safe my parishioners are feeling today? After a local church shooting and yet another gun store opening within strolling distance from our campus? I was in conversation with one parishioner just today who says she's scared to death to come to church. Our place of trust and community may have to become a fortress thanks to events like this, because on top of that shooting, how safe does she feel driving past that store on her way to church on Sunday morning? Most people in Southfield do not own guns, so most people in Southfield won't go to this store to see what the owner says will happen, that education and safety will be stressed there. What they will see is a big red and white sign advertising guns. Impressionable young minds, parents, teachers, and potential customers at each of these two childcare centers will see that sign. Potential parishioners coming to my church will see that sign, and I don't have to tell anyone here that those optics are bad. And the chilling reality is that it could become much more. Since 2001, at Target Sports Range and Gun Shop just a few miles down the road on Woodward in Royal Oak, there had been five deaths by suicide and two attempts. Yes, at a gun shop right around the corner. And unlike hair salons, restaurants, even marijuana stores, each of which receive annual checks by state government regulators, gun shops get none of this. There is no regulatory system in place for gun shops in Michigan. Now, sure, the ATF comes once every 10 years, but given recent cuts in staffing, what if that's once every 30 years? So a relatively unregulated gun dealer next to a childcare center? No. I urge the city to do all it can to create a win-win here and help the landlord and tenant find somewhere else to put this gun shop, but not here. Thank you.
Thank you. After Jason, we have J.C.
Hello, council members, and good evening. My name's Jason Schwanke. I've been a resident of Southfield since 2011. I have three young children. Fortunately, none of them do attend these childcare centers, but I have good friends here whose young son does, and I live less than a mile from this facility. I can also say I'm shocked as a resident of that area that I didn't know that such a gun store was being opened, though I do acknowledge that it apparently is lawful. But I urge the council to consider exactly what measures it will take to rewrite the zoning ordinances in such cases, and to give a plan for how it will engage with the business owner, Mr. Hudson, who I have no grievance against aside from poor judgment in this case. But obviously, the council should be working with this person, and I implore Mr. Hudson to withdraw his business and work together with the city council to find a more appropriate location that is not near to a childcare facility. And I implore the city council to please make transparent what measures will be taken to redo the zoning laws in this case to prevent in residential and in areas where young children are or families like mine, that such a facility can open without any real notice to the people within a mile of it. Thank you.
Is J.C. May here? All right. Patrick McGee. And after Patrick, we have Joseph Person.
Evening. My name is Patrick McGee, 4524 Elmhurst Avenue. Much of what I'm gonna say has already been said, so I won't say that, but I will bring up something that has not been raised. So Michigan has recognized the critical importance of protecting minors from firearms. Effective February 13th, 2024, Michigan Secure Storage Public Act 17, 2023 mandates that firearm owners securely store their firearms when a minor is or likely to be present. The law, this is the law, the law is specifically designed to protect children from unintended access to firearms. It requires firearms to be stored in a lockbox or a container or unloaded with a locked, locked with a locking device. Failure to comply can result in a serious penalty, including a misdemeanor and a felony charge to the owner. Now, considering the practical implication of a gun store sharing a driveway with two businesses, two childcare centers, children, parents, and daycare staff are constantly using that shared space to drop off, pick up, and daily activities. When customers purchase firearms, they will be transporting them through this very same driveway and parking lot, even if a firearm is secured within the store. The moment it leaves the counter and is carried by the customer to their vehicle, it is in a shared space where minors are likely to be present. This is from the law. The Michigan Secure Storage Law is challenged at this point. While the city directly applies the firearm, the law directly applies to the firearm owner, the city of Southfield has the responsibility to ensure its zoning and business approvals do not inadvertently create an environment where the laws are difficult to uphold and where the risk to children is significantly heightened. The shared driveway means that the children are constantly in the immediate vicinity of this business, whose primary function involves the transfer, active transfer of firearms. This presents a scenario where minors are likely to be present in close proximity to firearms that may not be secured by the store or the customers. It is highly inappropriate. So I encourage the city to do what you can, pass the moratorium, and enforce the law of Public Act 17 of 2023 that mandates secure, safe storage. Thank you.
After Joseph Person, we have Jennifer Moss.
Joseph Person. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like everybody to take out their pen and take down this number. This is case number 1:20CY1088. It is Lena, Lena, these are the plaintiffs, Lena Bailey, Stephen Butler, and Gabrielle Grossbad. That's Gabby Grossbad that's running for city clerk. That's an election denier. Now, y'all can go look this up, you don't have to believe me, go read the state case where he sued Gretchen Whitmer, he sued all of these different individuals, he sued all of these different individuals who make up the laws here in this state. This is wrong. And then he had the nerve to knock off somebody who, I'll call it like I see it, they were on the seat, they were on the ballot, they got knocked off because they didn't do some things right to be on the ballot. That's fine, we're doing a right end for that individual, Ms. Winnetka. But more importantly, all Republicans, all Republican-
Point of order, we'll stop the clock. You cannot campaign from the-
I'm not, I'm not campaigning. Women, okay, we will deal with this-
Please, please-
That's, that's fine, we could, but the issue is, I haven't seen it in your, your charter, I haven't seen this in your policy and procedures, just like last week you were telling somebody that was speaking, they had to calm down. But that's okay, I'll come back to my time at 1:58, okay? But at the end of the day, I'm not saying all Republicans in a bag, y'all have some Republicans up there on the city council. They're not bad people. But this individual is election denier, and we cannot put election denier in. And on the other thing, I want to move to the next thing. Ladies and gentlemen, I support y'all in terms of they need to move this gun shop. I'm an advocate, NRA guy, concealed weapons, own several guns and all of that, but when I go to a gun shop, I go to gun shops that are in Monroe, down in, down in Dearborn, further out where I'm not around people and guns. And ladies and gentlemen, let me get the numbers right. It is not 300, 400 feet or 1,300 feet. I took the tape measurement and measured it from the front door of the Red Zone to the front door of the XIL, the name of the daycare center. It's 32 feet, ladies and gentlemen, 32 feet. Worst-case scenario, say somebody gets into it, they got the gun shop right there. And here's the last thing, ladies and gentlemen, all of these folks are up for election, take it to the bank. They gonna do something because they can't afford not to be elected again.
After Jennifer Moss, we have Keith Harris.
Good evening. First, I want to say thank you to the city council for making this an important topic and dealing with it right away. I also want to acknowledge and thank the families, the community, the parents that have spoken, the IXL team that is here, Baby Genius, who is our partner in this. I want to thank all of those peoples for showing up here. I want to make, I have a prepared statement, but I wanted to say one more thing. We serve, I represent IXL. And, do you guys need a minute? I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. We, I represent IXL, and there are, we serve hundreds of families, and I can guarantee you that you're only hearing a part of the community that we serve. If every family could make it here tonight, they would, and that would be hundreds of families here. So I just wanted to point that out, and then I'll read my statement so I don't blabber on too long. Good evening, members of the Southfield City Council. My name is Jennifer, and I am one of the owners with IXL. The safety and security of our children and staff is at the heart of everything we do. While we support small businesses in our community, we do not believe that a firearm shop is an ideal neighbor for too early learning and childcare facilities. We share the concerns being expressed by many families and community members. We are hoping to work with city officials, the planning commission, and legal counsel to fully understand how this decision was made and to ensure that all applicable laws and regulations were followed. While we are hoping for a pause in the opening of the firearm store, but if not the proper authorities determine that the shop can move forward, our focus will remain on ensuring the well-being of our children and staff in our care. We will work closely with law, local law enforcement, and regulatory agencies, review our safety protocols, and take any additional steps necessary to preserve the secure, nurturing environment and high-quality education that our families have come to expect from IXL. We appreciate your attention to this matter and hope your actions will affirm your commitment to the well-being of Southfield's children. I want to add one other thing, if there's any way I can assist in the relocation of the firearms store, I would be open to that conversation. Thank you so much.
After Keith Harris, we have Melissa Scott.
How you doing today? I've never seen such real diversity in the room. Probably one of the reasons we spell our organization R-A-S-E. We spell it, we got a new meaning for race. It means real activism serves everyone, and what I see today is real activism serving everyone. Now, let me get to the point here. Just a year ago, you had a murder down the street at the Western. Four 14-year-olds had guns. The parents rented a hotel room at the Western Hotel. One of the kids had a 9mm, and the other ones had a 40 caliber. Accidental discharge or something happened where one of the kids ended up getting shot in the head right here in Southfield. Nobody, I've never heard one, one person up here talk about it. The murder's never been solved, but this is what we're here for today. There could be an accidental discharge in the parking lot, and that bullet could go anywhere and hit one of them kids. We got organizations in Southfield, we got boots on the ground, all racing life matter, gun violence, silence to violence, we got end-gun violence, we got, Father Chris got the gun chopper program where he buy guns back and chop them up. We got it at, we got these programs everywhere. It is not like you guys don't know what's going on. I mean, I'm so glad four of y'all are up for reelection, because you vote the same, you get the same. We have to, we can't no longer rely on this council. We can't do it. How is it that four kids can get a 9mm and a 45 at a sleepover? I mean, come on, people. We're praying every day to end-gun violence, and you guys turn around and open the door up to it. Come on, people. You are not the answer to our prayers, and evidently, you're not the answer to your own. Work with us, please work with us. Father Chris is working hard, we're working hard, the residents in Berkeley-Southfield are working hard. You got to work with us. It's time for a change, people, and you can only do it at the voting pole.
After Melissa Scott, we have Amari Kenyatta.
Hi, my name is Melissa Scott, and after hearing everything that's been going on, my childhood friend is Ann Clark, and she's the owner of that daycare next to the gun store. I didn't come up here to say this, but I am the longest-standing principal in Detroit, in Detroit Public Schools, 27-year principal and 33-year. And I'm actually the one who does the active shooter drills at my school of 400 elementary school students. Over the years, I've fought bad food, cell phones, social media, the invisible effect that kids now have in the community because, especially when they're poor and they're minority, and you have a big job in front of you, and if you added a gun store next to my school, I think it would push me into retirement. And so I just hope that you, everyone does the right thing. I came here, though, as a community member of Southfield, Michigan, our wonderful district, and copies of these remarks were placed in your mailboxes this afternoon, but you may not have had a chance to read them. So for the record and for others, Mr. Kenyatta will come and he will read some of those remarks. The city of council was thanked for moving forward in approving the Special Assessment District, the SAD, and is the only viable option for us with our water issue in River Banks Estates. Over the past years, it has been demonstrated that a group of homes cannot effectively manage such a system, considering the changing ownership, a lack of time and expertise, and not being an entity with enforcement, with enforcement authority. Despite our appreciation for the Special Assessment District, the objective of this request is to reduce the financial burden on the homeowners and yet not set any precedence. Our situation is unique enough to meet both of those goals. Thank you for allowing me to say both things.
After Amari Kenyatta, we will have Stacy Jackson. After Amari Kenyatta, we will have Stacy Jackson.
I'm gonna follow up with the three- I'm gonna follow up with the three reasons why the additional relief should be considered. A, shared responsibility. Even though the owners selected one of the vendors for the existing system, this was years ago, it is understood that the city staff provided a coordination and oversight. The efficiencies in that implementation and shared responsibility for same was, in essence, acknowledged when we were offered a cost-sharing agreement. The homeowners' deceptive agreement, which required the homeowners to pay forty-two percent of the cost. B, a verbal agreement with an upper-level manager should carry some weight. Owners were not aware of the internal workings of city government and the authorizations required, nor could they have been. Three, I'm skipping over things that's in your, your handout. Homeowners' investment today. Several homeowners have already spent thousands of dollars remediating the flood conditions impacting their homes. I, for example, spent twenty-one thousand my first few years. I'm told another homeowner recently this year spent twelve thousand five hundred dollars sealing her basement walls. And there were others. These expenditures mediated the problem to a degree, but did not address the genesis of the problem, the replacement of the new system will, so we support the S A D. Uh, two areas of relief we're asking you to consider. A, the homeowner's share under the verbal agreement was forty-two percent. It's understandable that this would not hold now due to the additional value that the S A D will provide us. Considering the foregoing and the circumstances related to the implementation of the existing system, it's requested that homeowner's share be low, shared low, below lower. Then they currently stayed at eighty-five percent by another ten or twenty percentage points. And that fix would benefit all the homeowners there. The second consideration is the interest rate deduction. Based on the latest cost estimate, the six percent interest rate compounded over, over ten years approximates either twenty-five point six or thirty-five point six percent, depending on how that's calculated. And that's an increase over the base amount. Depending on, uh, this would benefit homeowners that utilize the installment plan that's been advanced. In summary, the S A D is a necessary component for our neighborhood, but relief on the financial side would also be very helpful. And we thank you in advance for your considerations.
Thank you. After Stacy Jackson, we have David Washington.
Good evening. Stacy Jackson, Southfield resident and president of the Beachwood Acres Homeowners Association. I am here tonight to stand in solidarity with the daycare centers and the Southfield residents who oppose this issue. I've heard that when power stands up, stupid usually knows to sit down. It is my hope that this collective body rises to the occasion to stand against this. It is important that those who we elect to be the voice and wield the might of the people do so in these moments. I applaud you swiftly moving into a moratorium, but I'm more concerned with how it got here in the first place. I'm concerned on how this issue could pass by the seven of our council. A mayor, a city manager, a deputy manager, legal counsel, a clerk, planning, zoning, and various commissions. Who among you had your eyes open? Nothing about this registers as being a positive for the city. If anything, it is a glaring example of how desperate we are for business, how we are thirsty to build tax revenue. We are already suffering by not having the community amenities that we deserve with our taxes in the first place. And now firearms sandwiched in like a cookie between two daycare centers? Please, wield your might, open your eyes. Southfield is not a euphoric city. Things that are happening around our state and around our nation can and will happen here. We elect and appoint you to be the voices of reason, to hear and see the weather predictions, to prepare before the storm comes, not to be reactive after the damage and the hurricane arrives. Wield your might, use your voices. It is imperative that you show up, stand up, and speak up with the people on this matter. Your failure to do so will do nothing more than show that we have leadership that does not put the people first. The people are always, always, always the priority.
Yep, please, please hold your applause. After David Washington, um, it's the last name Sears, C I E R S.
Good evening. I'm David Washington. I am a thirty-five-year resident of Kinfield Manor subdivision. And about ten years ago, I had my business van parked in my driveway for maybe two or three nights in a row. I got a letter from the ordinance department, said I'm violating the ordinance by having a commercial vehicle in my driveway. I immediately handled that and never happened again. For the last two years, I have a new neighbor across the street from me at fifteen eight eight three Fairfax. This time of the year, under his religious beliefs, he built a shanty, I think they call it a sadad or something like that. In the front driveway, it's about twenty-by-twenty shack or a shanty. And I complained about this last year to the ordinance department. Nothing happened and he's got it up right now. It's a eyesore and I respect any and everybody's religion, but I don't think anybody have the right to hide behind a religion and violate laws or ordinance. And that's the ordinance of, of Southfield. I was here at the ordinance department this past Friday and they looked it up. They said, no, if they're gonna build that, they should have a permit and it should be behind the house, not out in the front driveway in front of your attached garage. It's a total eyesore. All of my neighbors are complaining about it. Something needs to be done because if I did it, it would be called a shack. And I'm sure the police would be out and I'd probably get a letter in, in the mail that, um, I'm gonna be fine if I didn't take it down. Please look into this here for me, thank you.
All right, and then after our next speaker, we'll have Jennifer Kramer.
Good evening, council. I live on Maitrot Street next to Pebble Creek Community. I have concern about our street being demolished by construction work to build apartments in the neighborhood. Maitrot is a very narrow street and lacks sidewalks, creating daily hazards for drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists. It's high foot traffic now, we, we have high foot traffic due to the new apartments built. Uh, without sidewalks, pedestrians are forced to walk directly in the roadway. Uh, new construction at the apartments brought heavy equipment and semi-trucks, which damaged the road severely and accelerated deterioration. With upcoming winter, potholes are certain to form, worsening an already unsafe street. At night, the road is pitch black because there's no lights. We pay heavy tax dollars in this neighborhood to not have lights, leaving both pedestrians and drivers vulnerable to accidents and near-head-on collisions when the residents must share the roadway. Family, children, and seniors walk their dogs, leaving, living in the area in our place at significant risk simply for walking home, to and from home. The absence of sidewalks is increasingly dangerous to the residents. A rebuild, a rebuilt road lighting would improve pedestrian and driver's safety by separating walkers from vehicle traffic. Increase visibility at night to prevent accidents and support safe access for our children. But while I'm, while I've been here today, let's talk about safety for our children. Um, red zone is associated with one of our neighboring cities, where zip codes and gangs, just to let you all know that. I stand here respectfully to voice my concern about proposed firearms and gun ranges opening up next to two childcare centers. I think it's very disgusting. While I fully support responsible gun, gun ownership and the rights, and the rights for citizens to bear arms under the law, I believe this specific location is not appropriate due to the immediate proximity to families with children I care for each day. Uh, with our current climate in this, climate in this country, I think it's a dangerous move to, to let gun ownership, I mean gun purchasing take place right next to a child daycare center. Parents and guardians deserve the peace of mind when dropping their children off. They should feel confident that the environment surrounding those centers is safe and secure as possible. I ask you to carefully consider the long-term impact of this decision you may make. Thank you.
Thank you. After Jennifer, we have Lauren Coyne.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Kramer. I live at fifteen Hanover in Pleasant Ridge. Um, I'm also a concerned parent in opposition to opening, the opening of a firearms store directly next door to my children's daycare. I'm a parent of three. We've been at IXL for five years. My oldest just graduated. I have a two-year-old and my youngest is just five months. I trust in IXL's commitment. I've always felt secure in trusting my children's care to IXL because of their unwavering commitment to safety and transparency. They keep parents informed about sensitive issues and welcome feedback, uh, fostering trust and confidence in their leadership. And I felt all of that up until now, but not because of IXL, but in spite of everything that they do for us. IXL admin, educators, and parents were shocked and disheartened to learn that the firearms store plans to open next door, just a few steps from our children and educators. I understand that firearms stores are lawful businesses and completely respect a business owner's want to succeed and that they should be able to do so in the city of Southfield. However, I must underscore the support for IXL's pursuit and our pursuit for the safety and the nurturing environment of our children. This specific location is completely inappropriate. As others have mentioned, it shares a driveway within steps of each other. Uh, it's a, it's a daycare and a state-funded preschool. It is crowded at drop-off. The current patrons of the existing businesses use the parking, IXL parking lot as overflow. My son's current classroom has glass windows that face this building. It is inappropriate and an unnecessary risk to have this shop next door. Regardless of the outcome, I am confident in IXL that they will enhance safety measures and collaborate with law enforcement. Um, and I really appreciate IXL and Baby Genius's stance, proactive stance, and believe that both centers will advocate strongly to ensure the businesses next door are legal in all of their requirements. But what I heard today is that there's a moratorium going forward. And it is unacceptable to say that it's okay for IXL and Baby Genius to sit here and have a firearms store open next door. Something has to be done now. I implore the city council to be creative, to work with the business owner, and for the business owner himself to, to reconsider, to rescind the application and to move somewhere else. Please keep our children in mind before it's too late. Thank you.
After Lauren, we have Susan Lefkovsky.
Hi, um, my name is Lauren Coyne. Um, I did not sign up to speak, so I didn't prepare anything. So I was surprised to hear my name, but I did send you all a letter, um, last week, so I will just read that. Uh, my name is Lauren Coyne. I'm a former Berkeley resident and now a resident of Beverly Hills, Michigan. My four-year-old daughter has attended IXL Learning Center since she was four years old, since she was three months old. She is currently enrolled in IXL through the Great Start Readiness Program. It's a Michigan state-funded pre-K program, a school. She is there to learn, grow, and prepare for kindergarten. As a parent, I live in constant painful fear that my child may experience the reality of gun violence. This is not the experience that my own mother, who's with me today, who also didn't sign up to speak, um, but is here with me in support. She didn't experience this unimaginable fear when she was dropping me off. It wasn't like it back then. Yet today, it's an everyday reality for families like mine. The recent news that the firearms store may open directly adjacent to IXL Learning Center is deeply disturbing. This is not just a business next door. IXL is a school, a place where children come to learn and should be safe. Situating a gun store immediately beside a school and their playground creates an unacceptable risk. Anyone could legally purchase a firearm and walk outside, see children playing, and make them a visible and vulnerable target. This is not an unrealistic scenario. The statistics are undeniable. In two thousand twenty-three, gunfire was the leading cause of children's death in Michigan. Since two thousand twenty, our state has endured a hundred and four mass shootings. We must do more to protect our children and placing a gun shop next to our daughter's school is a step in the exact opposite direction. I ask you to consider this, not as a council member, but as a parent, grandparent, aunt, uncles, and community leaders. If it were your child, grandchild, niece, or nephew, would you feel safe? Would you feel comfortable knowing that this decision could have been prevented? I strongly urge you to take action to stop for this firearms business from opening in the current location. The consequences of an action are too great. We could not wait until a tragedy occurs to look back and realize that the city had an opportunity to prevent it and it chose not to act. Thank you.
Susan. Okay. Steven with a, uh, D's the first letter, the last name. Elwood. All right, and are you Steven?
Duke Hall, yes.
Duke, okay. And after Steven, we have Jessica Mahalik.
Uh, I wasn't really planning on, uh, speaking tonight. My, my intention was to be here and support fellow families at IXL. My daughter's a four-year-old that attends IXL. I have a bit of a unique experience in, in being around gun violence. In October of nineteen ninety-four, I was a student at Troy High School. At that time, my fellow classmate, an honor roll student and who sat next to me in history class, walked into a Subway restaurant and shot a woman, a nineteen-year-old girl in cold blood. When the police asked him why he did it, he said because he was bored. I've never stopped thinking about that in my entire life. And now I stand here thinking that my four-year-old daughter may have to live that same experience or be put in that same position. I'm, I'm absolutely stunned that this situation was brought about and no one bothered to ask the community for what they thought this situation would put their families in. I, I, I urge you, please, do not put these families through any of this. Thank you.
All right, after Jessica, we have Ben Epstein.
Ben's my husband, he's not here. But hi, I'm Jessica, or hello, everybody. Thank you for, um, listening to me tonight. Uh, my husband and I own two houses in Southfield and an empty lot. And we plan on building a house there, so we have a lot invested in the city. Um, I also had an in-home daycare for nine years and was in this very building, standing here before you when I got, um, uh, when I got permitted, permission to have my home rezoned for, to have more children at my house at the time. Um, and that went well. And that went well. But I'm in opposition of this gun store opening up close to these daycares because I feel that there's a visual influence for children as well as just proximity. Guns being close to children seems inappropriate. It feels like maybe we have fallen into a loophole because it's not legal to have a gun shop close to a school, yet these are schools. I always thought of myself as a teacher and educator, even though I'm not working at a school, just a daycare, I guess. I just feel like daycare should have some of the same laws regarding safety as public schools should, just as far as the proximity of guns to the daycare. I'd like to work with anyone and brainstorm and figure out what we can do in the future. It seems like, you know, something, we slipped through the cracks or something somehow. I'm not sure how this happened. I was always proud to be, to live in Southfield. I like the diversity, and it's beautiful. And I remember when I came here for the rezoning, it was brought to my attention some aesthetics, aesthetics of my house personally that had to be updated, as well as other people who were talking about having things built specifically with pillars and, you know, the pillars had to match the pillars next door because we wanted it to look beautiful. And having a gun shop next to, in between two daycare centers is not beautiful, does not look good at all, you know? And it's kind of embarrassing now. I used to be so proud of being here in Southfield, and now I'm super embarrassed, especially because this is on the news. This isn't just Michigan. This isn't just Southfield. This is all over, and it's embarrassing now. But I hope that we can go forward and change some laws, so I'm looking forward to seeing you guys on the eighth. Thanks.
You said Ben Epstein is not here?
He's not.
Okay. Our next speaker is Pamela Gerald.
Before I get started, I'm gonna say to this entire auditorium, let he or she who is without sin cast the first stone. Charles Hicks, you sat there and you allowed a person to come up to this podium and talk about somebody that's sitting in this very room.
Point of order, please. Yes. Do not address a specific council person.
Okay, well, him allowed that. Now, I wanna say something. There's three people in this race. Gabby Grossbar did exactly what he was supposed to do. He got the necessary signatures and those signatures were certified.
Hold on, please stop the clock. There, there is no electioning from campaigning from the podium.
But it happened.
And the previous speaker was stopped as well.
Well, it happened. So we have a race coming up, and we have three people on the ballot. Gabby did what he was supposed to do. Coretta didn't get signature certified. She's a write-in. And also the, when that guy person that Joe was pushing.
Please stop. The audience, please, this is not a participation session. I will ask again to please not campaign.
And Council President Mandelbaum, Joe Persons was allowed to sit here and call someone a name that was not appropriate.
And we stopped, we stopped.
And you, Charles, Coretta, Yolanda, and Dan said absolutely nothing. Do not mess with my clock and not allow me to say what I wanna say. It was inappropriate, the way he was allowed to attack this man and attack his character, when we got somebody that couldn't even get the signatures to get on the ballot. We've got someone that's running for that race that can't even remember the campaign disclosure to put on a flyer. That guy-girl is in violation of MCL 169 2.47 subsection 1, and that is failing to put a disclosure statement on the flyer.
Mr. Chair, again.
Point of order.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, now you got some backbone.
Excuse me, one more interruption and you'll be asked to sit down, please.
No, I, I can speak. Let me be clear. I am a man first. I'm proud to be elected to this community and I represent this community, but I'm not gonna sit here and allow you to continually come to this podium and be disrespectful and divisive.
But you allowed the guy to help you get up there. You allowed the guy that's occupying that seat.
Officer, can you please escort this woman out? Thank you.
There's no applause.
And I'll be back. I'm gonna go on every podcast and talk about how spineless you are.
Thank you. Have a nice night. Officer, please remove this person from the building. Thank you. Looking forward to the podcast.
That concludes our communications for this evening.
Through the chair. Through the chair.
Yes, Mr. Crowe.
There was a couple gentlemen that did not, were not able to sign up that wanted to speak. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That's your discretion if you want to recognize, recognize them.
How many?
There was two gentlemen that, that approached me after the sign-in sheet was, that's up to you.
Counsel, okay, there's two, do you, do you have their names? Okay.
Good evening, council members. My name is Tom Kurzanovic, and I'm a resident at nearby Berkeley. My three-year-old daughter is set to join IXL next week, and boy, this past week has been a bit of a whirl. I'm here tonight as a parent and a neighbor, deeply concerned about the proposal to allow a firearm store to open right next to two established daycares. Let me put it plainly, kids and guns do not mix. We teach our children the ABCs. A is for apple, B is for ball, C is for cat, but F is not for firearms. This isn't about politics, it's about common sense, child safety. Other sensible businesses, liquor stores, marijuana dispensaries are required to have buffers and extra oversight. Why should firearm dealers be treated with less care than alcohol and cannabis? You've heard from the community tonight. Parents deserve peace of mind when they drop off their kids. Daycare providers deserve stability in their businesses. And children deserve a community that puts their safety first. Please, work with the owner of Red Zone Firearms to find a more suitable location. Send a clear message that Southfield values its children above all else. Thank you.
Was there one other gentleman that spoke to the planner that wanted to speak? If you could just give us your name, please. Sorry?
David Kelly.
Okay.
My name is Dave Kelly, and I'm speaking tonight strongly against the opening of Red Zone Firearms Store placement next to IXL Berkeley. My son Damian is two years old and attends IXL daycare. Many tonight have already spoken on the obvious concerns and risks with the proximity of this store to where our kids play and learn. Others have spoken on their experience with gun violence, of which I can share with an uncle and multiple friends from high school murdered using a gun, and with my nephew's school system in Minneapolis recently being under a gun attack. However, my focus is on how this happened, and given that the gun store appeared to be working towards its opening, what steps could be taken moving forward? Terms of who was to blame, certainly the daycares are excluded, considering that they only recently found out about this store. Red Zone Firearms and Mr. Hudson also frankly could be excluded from blame. By all accounts, he has proceeded correctly with every step of the opening of his legal business and has every right to open his store. Certainly, the landlord deserves a substantial amount of blame, but this would not be the first time someone in real estate acted solely in their own best interest. The reality is that the blame for this issue is on the individuals on the city council and the leadership of Southfield. It was this group who had no prior zoning regulations regarding gun stores and proximity to daycares. It was this group who saw the exact same situation take place one year ago down the street in Berkeley, rather than acting proactively, did nothing. It was this group who clearly does not have the connections to the business community in Southfield to be aware of this landlord's intentions, even with a massively important gas station project taking place directly across the street. The good news is while this group's inactions are fully to blame, this is the same group who can develop solutions for this issue. Will this group leverage their existing connections with federal, state, local officials to find funding? Will this group develop and require additional safety measures, hourly restrictions, or additional regulations prior to an operation like this opening? Will this group update zoning regulations to prevent this from ever occurring again? Will this group, in an election year, with many of you running to protect your own seats and needing to demonstrate a commitment to the people of Southfield, correct your prior mistakes and develop a plan moving forward? I work in Grand Blank, and my office window stares directly formally at the high roof of the church that was destroyed by gun violence yesterday. Today in Grand Blank, we all feel hopeless with no productive ways to prevent future attacks. This group in front of me, though, has direct actions that they could take to improve the safety of their community, protect our daycare facilities, and develop a framework for the future. Therefore, I'll end by saying the same thing that all of us say about our elected officials following a mass shooting, do something. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so that concludes our communications. Correct, Mr. Crowe?
Yes, I only had two individuals come up.
Okay. I believe the council heard everyone's comments. There were a couple questions that I think would still need to be addressed. One was the shared parking lot, and I don't know if that's the planner or the city attorney would answer that. And then the proximity to a school, we heard that there's obviously boundaries that are required, and in this case, they're not being followed. If our deputy attorney can answer those questions?
Good afternoon, or good evening, Council President and council. Yes, I can speak to that with respect to the laws and proximity to a daycare center. There are laws that regulate the proximity of possessing a loaded or unsecured firearm in relationship to a school. Unfortunately, IXL and Baby Genius are not considered schools under state law. They are considered daycare centers. There is no law that prohibits the operation of a gun store within any proximity of a daycare center or a school. It, it regulates the possession of a firearm. With respect to leaving the premises after you purchase a firearm, there is an exception under state law for transportation of that weapon or firearm from the place of purchase to your home or where you're going to store it, and it has to be secured and unloaded. There are regulations in the law without reading the actual terminology from the law, but there are regulations that exempt that person who just purchased their firearm from the 1,000-foot prohibition on possessing a firearm from 1,000 feet of a school. And again, a daycare center is not considered a school under state law.
That's, that would answer the shared driveway question as well. There's no regulation against that.
There's no regulation with respect to a daycare, you know? Whether they share a driveway or not.
Through the chair?
Yes.
We, we did pull all the previous site plan approvals for both properties, and there was an easement granted, I believe in 1993, for the shared use of that driveway. So irrespective of what the uses are, there is a shared easement in place for all the adjacent properties to use that driveway equally.
Okay. Councilman Haynes? Okay. Can you turn on your mic, please?
Is there a way that that could be included from a state level to change from schools to add daycare centers in there?
Yes, Councilwoman Haynes, from the research that I've done over the past week or so and in conjunction with Planner Crowe, there are regulations in a couple of municipalities that include specifically other educational institutions or daycare centers, but those are zoning regulations, and that regulates where a gun store, retail gun store can be located within a municipality.
Okay, and, okay, help me here, because he owns the building?
That I'm not aware of.
Okay, so this, this is what we need to find. Who owns the building?
There's a different owner than the gun shop proprietor he's leasing at space.
Okay, so he's, so the reason why it did not come before us is why?
That, that I don't know, maybe Terry or Crowe.
I'd be happy to answer that through the chair. So there was no zoning amendment for special land use or even site plan that was required because this was a retail use moving into a retail space in a permitted B3 district. And therefore, it didn't come before Planning Commission or City Council. This was administrative review that was conferred with the building official that determined the retail space was, the retail use was a permitted use in the B3 district. So there was, that's why there was no notice requirements, and that's why it didn't become, come before the Planning Commission or the City Council. Now, to your other question, our proposed amendments will address the location of future firearms and also exclude childcare centers within the separation requirements. And we are also proposing to limit that to specific districts. That is being taken up at the Planning Commission on October 8th. Public hearing is being set for later this month, and it'll come back to council for your consideration in November. So we're immediately acting on with your moratorium being put in place that gives us the ability to bring forth these new zoning amendments that will address these issues that are being raised tonight.
How soon did the leasing agent, the owner of the building, know that this guy was building, was gonna be a gun store? How soon did he know that?
I, I can't speak to that. I'm not aware of that.
So it was, he, so it could have been a week? We don't, we have no idea.
I cannot speak to that tonight. We're continuing to investigate.
So how can we find that out?
We'll, we need to investigate that, the timeline. I mean, this was a private matter between the proprietor and the business owner.
And have you been in touch with the owner or the, the leasing person?
Not at this time. That, that's why I suggested community policing. Make the first approach to have a discussion with the property owner. And then broker further discussion.
I have some more to say, but I don't know.
You have more questions?
No, I have more questions. I have more to say, but I'll wait.
Do you have any questions or anything that you still have to address based on all the speakers? Go ahead, Mr. Ray.
So thank you, Council President. Just, just wanted to remind, a comment that made was made by the planner earlier on. And even though most of us on this council are sitting here listening and may not respond, does not mean that we are not sympathetic and empathetic to the concerns lifted. We all have various concerns as well and questions, but one of the things that the city planner had lifted in his statement was that the city of Southfield will continue its investigation of state and federal laws and regulations regarding the issues raised by the community's concerns. But the most important thing that I saw in that statement was we will be evaluating and pursuing available options. So I just ask that you give us the time to do some due diligence, take in information that you've stated, and see what we can do to make it amicable as best as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Crowe.
In addition to that, I would just like when.
Is your mic on?
It is. When the moratorium does come before us, I think, I don't know where the magic number of 120 days come up, I'd like to just see it indefinitely or a year until we can figure this out. Four, four months is not enough. We've, we've got to make sure we have enough time. So I would like for us, when we get to that point, that we make that adjustment.
Mr. Crowe can explain the 120 days.
We, and conferring with the city attorney, we have to have a reasonable amount of time. You can always extend the moratorium if we need more time, but we are, we are moving this thing forward as, as quick as legally possible. We, we believe we will have amendments back to you in November. We built 120 days in there. Should there be any, any further questions or investigations? We built the 120 days in there should there be any further questions or investigation, but we are taking this up immediately. My department has already began researching regulations. We have a draft that we're working on that will be presented to Planning Commission next Wednesday. We're scheduling a public hearing for October, and this item will come back in November. Now, should we need further time for a moratorium, we will confer with the legal department and ask for an extension. But I do know from past experiences, you have to have a reasonable amount of time. Can't just indefinitely put something off, and I'll defer to our legal-
Well, I said more than six months. I just want to make sure we have enough time to do-
Yes, yes, I definitely agree, and we conferred that we believe the 120 days is certainly enough time, but we'll defer to you.
Okay. Yes?
Clearly, clearly, you know, the council is moving forward. I would like for the attorney and/or the planner to address this little hot issue. What, you know, we cannot force anybody to move or anybody to force the reversal of any business agreement. And I'm thoroughly aware of lawsuits. Can you explain to us and for the audience what, how, I hate to use this term, how our hands are tied based on, I know, I know a little business law. So can you explain that for the audience, please?
Yes, thank you for the question. And through the chair, Councilwoman Brightwell, we, as I understand it, the city has already provided the business with a certificate of occupancy, and it has already met all of the requirements to operate in that space. It would expose the city to a tremendous amount of liability to arbitrarily and capriciously withdraw or revoke that approval. I think that we need to explore any options. There have been situations where a business owner may voluntarily choose to relocate, but we cannot revoke the approvals that we've already provided without putting the city at risk for further litigation and then depriving the business owner of due process, which we wouldn't want to do that to any other business owner or any property owner. So we need to be cautious and deliberate in how we move forward.
Okay, thank you very much.
You know, we live in a world today where emotions are running high because of a lot of things that are going on. And sometimes we carry these emotions into situations like this. What happened at the church has happened across this world, and it scares a lot of us, and it should. And in our own community, there are things that are happening that we are all concerned about. And for someone to come up here and stand at the podium and literally say, "We do not care," or "I do not care," I'm going to speak for myself. I am a mother. I am a wife. I am a grandmother, a sister, and an aunt. I don't have to have a child in that daycare center to care. I do care. Put that on record, Mr. Whoever that came up here and said, "We don't care." I care, and I know these people up here do. We care about what happens here. I'm not up here in this position just to enjoy myself. I've been serving before I came up here. I'm not blowing smoke. I don't come up here and make no statement about anything that I don't put my feet, my heart, and my mind to. And this situation here is affecting our whole community. And I urge you as parents, mothers, fathers, I hear you. I understand where you're coming from. I have a three-year-old grandbaby. She's very smart. She's very visual. If she were to go to that daycare center, every day she would see that red sign, and that would stick in her mind. Those words would stick in her mind. I see you, and I understand exactly where you're coming from. Something has to be done. It should be done. I can't do very much from here when it comes to the state and the matters of the state, and it's very few things I can say because of legality. But I can tell you some things I can tell you to do. You came in here as a community. Stand as a community. Get together and do what you can on your side to let this person know where you, what you feel. If it happened somewhere else, watch what they did, do what you can there, and I'm going to do my best in this seat to do what I can to follow through on whatever I can within the power that I have. I'm one person. I'm not the city attorney. I'm not the city planner. But in this position, I'm going to do what I can because I don't like this at all. I, when I found out about this, I made calls, I did what I could. I wanted to confront the guy. I couldn't do that. I'm mad about it. Yes, I'm mad about it. And we all feel like this. I'm going to say what I got to say. Look, this is not about an election to me. I got stuff to do whether I'm here or not, but this is, I came to serve, and this is what I'm going to do. This is not no blowing smoke to a candidate residence that come up here and do grandstanding that when you're not up here, you're not doing nothing else. I'm going to do what I got to do. I feel you, parents, on this, and I know you're hurting, and I understand this because it's just the idea of what could happen. And I believe in preventive measures. We got to do stuff to make sure some things don't happen as a community, and we got to be civil about it. We can't come up here and attack a councilman and tell him he's spineless. How dare you say this? And all the other mudslinging that's going on. Let's stand together on this issue so when Southfield stands, we know that we stand together. I don't need a grandstand of applause, but we got to stand together in this city, and we got to watch what we're saying about our city. And we got to watch what we're saying about the people here. It's too much of this mess going on. Clear it out. If you ain't got nothing good to say that's going to be damaging to somebody's character, let it go. Get it out of here. Stop it and see what you can to do. Do what you can to make this place better. If you're not here for that, don't come here. Don't come up here with this foolishness. These are about people's lives. This is a business. We have to have order here. We must have order here. Otherwise, it's a circus, and we are not animals. And I don't come to entertain, and neither do these people up here. I'm going to say what I got to say, whether I'm here after November or not, but you're going to hear from me because I'm going to do what I can to make things better in this city. That's what I'm here for. I'm done.
All right, council, any other questions? Any last words, Mr. Planner, City Attorney?
You know, I said this at the Planning Commission. I hear everybody's concern. I've read all their emails. I'm a grandparent. I have lost sleep over this over the week. All I can do is move forward. I immediately recommended the moratorium. We are proposing amendments to address this issue so it doesn't happen again. We are investigating state and federal law, and there are other things that can be done as a neighbor-to-neighbor issue come together that maybe we can get some creative resolve to this and still uphold our legal authority. So I, I'm committed to doing everything we can in our department to move this forward and make sure this never happens again.
Okay.
So just a personal note from, for you all. I have a younger brother who was a promising football player. He played at Michigan State. He played for the San Francisco 49ers. He played for the Calgary Stampede. He was killed after a game when his team were celebrating. So gun violence is something that I am real close to. When I served as the president of the school board, and we had Parkland happen, I was very close to gun violence. So every time I hear a news story, I cringe because things have gotten out of control. I have a job, we have a job, to support the city. There were many facts that were lifted that I hope that you all really heard. No one at this dais sat and said, "We allow this to happen." It didn't come before us because it didn't have to. So now we know something, where we're doing something, and sometimes it is reactive. Sometimes you can't listen to every municipality, what they're doing, because we still have to do the work in this community. So now that we are assessing and understanding what others do, we're going to look at it to make sure that we can align wherever possible. So again, I just ask for you all to give us some, some time to react to what's happening. So we care. Thank you.
Deputy Administrator, you had a comment?
Yes, sir. In concurrence with the city attorney, I did contact our risk management for the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority. They did confirm that, in their opinion, there is nothing legally we can do to force this to stop. Our only option at this point in relation to this location would be to meet with the renter, landlord, see if some inducement can be worked out to come to an agreement where they would move. I'm sure there will be expenses relating to that. If council is in agreement, the administration will work with planning department to see what can be done in that regard.
Okay.
Unfortunately, the horse is out of the stable. We cannot rescind authorizations that have already been issued.
All right, thank you. I don't know if there's really much, much to say. We've, we've heard from residents, we've heard from neighbors, we've heard from friends about this situation. We are moving forward. We are putting steps in place. We have the moratorium that we will be discussing shortly. I think my colleague said it best. I don't necess, I don't need to repeat anything, but we do hear you, we do care, and that's why we are taking action this evening to make sure that this does not occur again and that there's proper protocols in place. You have a question?
No, make a motion.
We don't need a motion right now.
No?
We still have other communications to discuss. I'm sorry, we, there's no, there's no questions right now. But we did have some other residents who had some other questions raised during communications. We'll try to answer some of them. Some of them were code enforcement. I really encourage, if you have a code enforcement issue with cars, with homes, to call the code enforcement department, 248-796-4140, and they do follow up. Sometimes code enforcement does take a while because there's a process that we have to follow. Like anything within the government, there's steps and rules in place that we need to follow, and just because something's not happening that you can see doesn't mean there isn't things behind the scenes. We heard some questions that there's water issues in apartments or in buildings. I recommend that if you have a building issue, if you live in an apartment to, and you're not getting the help you need from the management company, to call the building department, If you have a water issue, please call the Department of Public Works at 248-796-4860. We heard a number of other code enforcement issues, especially about cars and driveways of, you know, that haven't moved for 48 hours. I will ask that our Neighborhood Services Subcommittee take a look at that because I was thinking, I don't have a garage, and if I go on vacation, my car won't move for more than 48 hours. So I think that's something that we need to look at. Questions or comments were brought up about changing the charter. You may or may not know that we currently have a charter committee that is looking at different sections, and they're going through that. There was some questions about Inglewood and Beachwoods. We'll have to reach out to our public, our Parks and Rec Director to get updates on that. I know she did mention to me that they do, they are increasing cleaning in the bathrooms at Inglewood and the one that will open soon in Beachwoods, and they, they're trying to work on that. Their, the bathroom at Inglewood is functional. It may not be the prettiest, but it is currently functional. There were questions about the SAD that we recently approved for Riverbank Estates. That is something I cannot answer this evening, but our Public Works Directors here and our deputy city attorney, and it's something that we will take back and see what, what can be done for that, that issue. There were some issues in the Pebble Creek neighborhood about potholes and some sewer issues and speeders and sidewalks. The city does have a speed bump or a traffic calming program that is done by petition. It can be found on our website under Engineering or Public Works called Traffic Calming Program. There is a survey and a petition that has to be filed by the homeowners in that neighborhood that would like some type of traffic calming. That can be downloaded from the website, and then that goes to the Engineering Department and the Police Department, and they look at that. We will also have code enforcement take, and the Public Works Department, take a look at litter and potholes along that street and notify the police that there's, I guess, people racing in all hours of the evening. We'll also have to talk to Public Works and Engineering about the issue with the neighborhood attached, I guess, the sewer system is attached to the apartment complex. Again, that's beyond the scope of what we can answer this evening, but we will ask our Public Works Department about that. There were also two speakers, different areas, that had questions about, I guess, one is a meeting hall in the neighborhood, and the other one is about a hut or shanty in the person's driveway. We have those addresses. We will talk with our code enforcement. I know one of the issues about the meeting hall was recently discussed at the Neighborhood Services, and I know that code enforcement and building were looking into that specific property, but we can get an update on that. I believe I've answered everyone's question. Counsel, did I miss anything? I was trying to take notes as best I could. Okay, so we have a couple takeaways to get back to everyone. All right. That being said, we'll move on to the next part of our agenda, which are minutes. And counsel, you were emailed some, a new set of minutes that were corrected. And if you feel comfortable approving those, we can do that this evening.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we approve, as applicable, the corrected minutes for the budget meeting of June 9, 2025, the regular meeting minutes for June 23, 2025, June 30, 2025, and July 21, 2025.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve the minute, meeting minutes of June 9, June 23, June 30, and July 21. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move that we approve the proposed emergency moratorium for new firearm sales establishments and firearm shooting ranges.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the proposed emergency moratorium for new-
Councilwoman Hoag?
I did.
Okay.
I heard her, I heard her first.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
All right. We have a motion by Councilwoman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the proposed emergency moratorium for new firearm sales establishments and firearms shooting ranges. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Crowe, do you have anything to add?
Not at this time.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, move on to our consent agenda. The consent agenda are items that are considered routine, non-controversial, or have previously been discussed. Counsel, do you have any items you wish pulled for further discussion?
Yeah, item B and item D.
E?
Oh, no, D. D as in Delta.
Any other? Counsel, any other questions or anything else you need pulled? Okay. The first is the, the question you have is the authorization to purchase an animal control vehicle. What's your question, sir?
My question is, is this, is this item being, is being purchased in Grand Rapids- My question is, is this, is this item being, is being purchased in Grand Rapids and then it's being sent to Indiana? What, what, what is the, how, how is this vehicle being transported? And are we responsible for transporting it and, or driving it or getting it to out of Indiana, I mean, out of Grand Rapids down to Indiana?
We're going to take possession of it from Grand Rapids. That's where the, the, the base vehicle is available, right? And then it, all the parts, the specialized parts have to be added to it. So, when it goes to Indiana, it goes, we get the animal cage and all these other parts added to it in Indiana. So, we'll take, we'll drop it off over there, but they're not, they won't be ready for, for about seven months or so.
Okay. So, how does it get there? Do we drive it there or will the people in Grand Rapids drive it there or transport it or, well, what's the-
We'll drive, we'll drive it there. So, we'll take possession of the vehicle and then we'll drive it over to Indiana when they're ready for it.
Okay. That, that's normal protocol? I mean-
Yeah.
Okay. I just, I just saw that security was route there and just trying to get the, the protocol for, for that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, the dealership in Indiana, in Grand Rapids isn't going to hold it for seven months, you know, so we have to take possession of it.
Okay, well, no, it's clearly needed. I'm just trying to understand the protocol.
All right.
Okay.
All right. And then your next question is on item D, generator upgrades for the fire stations, 1, 2, 3, and 5. What is your question, sir?
This, this is a very simple question. I, I couldn't pick it up in reading. Well, what happened to station 4?
Station 4 was studied and it did not need to be replaced. That generator is newer and it handles the station fine. So, 1, 2, and 3, and 5 are the stations that needed new generators.
When was 4, when was station 4 generator installed?
I don't know that answer, but I can get it for you. But it's not one that we're going to replace.
Okay.
Wasn't needed in the assessment of the stations to replace station 4 generator.
Okay, I hate to say, I was just expecting to see that in the write-up. Okay, I'm good enough, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I move that we approve consent agenda item A, Oakland County Interlocal Agreement to Provide Animal Care Services for the City of Southfield. B, Authorization to Purchase Animal Control Vehicle for Police. C, Authorization to Purchase 14 Not Secure Boxes with Not Connect Software. D, Receipt of Proposal for Generator Upgrades for Fire Stations 1, 2, 3, and 5. E, Five Door Access Pad Additions. F, Agreement with the Road Commission for Oakland County for Winter Road Maintenance 2025-26. G, Receipt of Bids on Printing the 2025 Annual Report 2026 Calendar. And H, Review and Approve of Wages and Benefits for the Bargaining Unit Police Officer Association of Michigan, Public Safety Supervisor, and AFSCME Local 3636.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve consent agenda items A through H as presented. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we move into public hearings. The first public hearing is a hearing of necessity for a special assessment project, SS 1177, the Coventry Woods Backyard Drainage Improvements.
Yes, good evening, Counsel. So, the two residents who spoke earlier this evening really were here for the, for this public hearing. But this is a public hearing of necessity for the, the project that you had on September 8th authorized initiation for. And this is backyard drainage improvements in the Coventry Woods subdivision area. Is, this impacts eight residents. This is longstanding backyard drainage issues over there. The city has previously tried and facilitated. This was not, previously it was not a SAD. It was a facilit, we facilitated, financed, acted as a, as a escrow really, sort of for, for the residents to, to perform that project. Unfortunately, that, that improvement back in 1990, it's no longer functioning or it never quite functioned. There's a varying opinions there. But we have come up with a, what we believe to be a permanent solution. And we are proposing a SAD here. This system, this project will install three catch basins in the backyard easements and then they will drain out of, in new storm sewers through the side yards to a new storm sewer in the Bellwood Drive right-of-way. Total storm sewer length of 800 feet. This will also include reconnection of some pump discharge lines to the new storm system. The total cost is $175,857.50. The city's share will be the engineering costs, which are $27,055. Comes out to about 15%. So, we're asking you to open up this public hearing here and then after the public hearing to vote on passing resolutions 3 and 4. So, 3 will, sorry, resolution 3 will authorize, will, will deem this project, which is SS 1177, a necessity and resolution number 4 will authorize the city engineering department to see competitive bids.
All right, so we'll have the public hearing. We'll take questions from the counsel and answer any questions that come up. This is now a, I'll open the public hearing for the special assessment project, SS 1177. Anyone who would like to speak? You have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
I have a question. We just made a presentation just a little while earlier.
So, right, so you can, you can reiterate? We heard your comments.
Okay, I'll just read because it got kind of, whatever. Shared responsibility, even though the owners selected one of the vendors for the existing system some years ago, it is understood that the city staff provided the coordination and oversight. Deficiencies in that implementation and the shared responsibility for same was in essence acknowledged when we were first offered a cost sharing agreement. The homeowners accepted the agreement, which required homeowners to pay 42% of the cost, which is different now. Two, a verbal agreement with upper level management should carry some weight. Homeowners were not aware of the internal workings of city government and authorizations required. And homeowners investment up to date, several of us, all eight of us actually have put in several thousands of dollars because of this water damage. I'm probably the second newest homeowner. I've been there for a year and because they sold it in the wintertime, there was no way for anyone to see, in my inspections, to see that this existed. But through the records that we've obtained, that this situation has been going on for years and there was no disclosure when I bought the, the property. And now, this is where we are. Several homeowners have already spent thousands of dollars, Mr. Canyada's right here, remediating the flood conditions impacting their homes. He spent over $21,000 in the first few years. I'm told that another homeowner that was here earlier spent $12,500 sealing basement walls and there were others. And these expenditures mediated the problem to a degree, but did not address the, the problem itself. And so, what we're asking is just for some additional relief because none of us, we've, we've put in so much money already. And then when we first talked, when we first spoke, we were going to, there was going to be a larger share on behalf of the city. And so, we were, because we put in thousands of dollars and some, two homeowners, we just knew, we just bought the house. And apparently, this has been going on for years and so we requested that there would be additional assistance. And so, maybe with the new RFPs, you know, maybe the cost would be lower, but it is extenuating. It's really large. We, we've had a great relationship with Abdul and some of the others, but it is a huge expense to the homeowners there and a really big problem because the rest of us still have to put in the $15,000, $20,000 additional to buying the house. So, did you want to add something, Mr. Canyada?
I don't have a lot to add from what I said and you all have a printout, hopefully, of what we, what we sent, sent this afternoon. The only thing I'm, I'm trying to emphasize is we need some relief for the homeowners. Okay? We gave some reasons of why that should be considered, you know, more relief than what the 15% that was offered. And, you know, a lot of people went through a lot of things over these years. You know, they spent a whole lot of money, more than this cost, actually, in our, I mean, each individual's share, more than this. And they all, and some of it just recently. The one lady was just this year, I mean, just this year. Yeah. And, you know, over the years, there's just a lot of money spent while we were discussing who is 100% responsible. Is it us, is it the city, you know, that kind of thing. So, we reached an agreement and then we finally got to where we are now. And we're just saying, either give us, you know, lower the percentage that we have to pay of the total project or, you know, lower, well, that's a big thing because that benefits everybody, all the homeowners. Now, you, but you could also lower the percentage interest rate. But that would, I ain't going to say only benefit, but that would benefit the people that use the installment agreement. But if you do the first one, then that's going to help them too because if you lower the percentage of the homeowners are responsible for, the installment goes down. I mean, they're going to pay you the 6%, but, or less dollars. So, I'm saying, just give us some kind of relief. You know, we spent too much money in this during the past, I guess, 30 years, you know, while this was being discussed. And I say us, I'm talking about past owners as well as current owners. I didn't realize the clock was running. Okay, so that's all I got to say.
All right, is anybody else who would like to speak on this item?
There was some other person here and they, they couldn't wait, I guess.
Yeah.
Counsel President? I'm aware of Mr. Canyada's name, but could the other young lady please repeat her name for me?
Oh, Melissa Scott, 23191, Coventry Woods Lane. Yes.
Yeah, we're actually representing the community because when we started, that's how we started out. She was heading it up, I jumped in there too.
Yeah, so it's a public hearing, you've, you've used your time. All right. Last call, if anybody wants to, to speak? All right, the public hearing is closed.
Counsel, before you start deliberating, so, one of the residents, and this is, I believe, the, the resident that they're referring to, she did call me today and she was adamant that she did not want to participate in this. So, there's eight residents that are impacted. Six, six of them signed the, the petition. So, that's 75%. The minimum threshold for the SAD is 60%. So, but she, you know, she mentioned she spent $15,000 recently resealing her basement walls and waterproofing, all that stuff. So, she says she doesn't have any problems anymore. So, just something for you to consider. I know she was here earlier, so. The other part of this and this, I mean, this is, I'll take the blame here, but initially when we started having these discussions with these residents, I did approach it from the perspective of the city will take on a larger share just because a large portion of the storm sewer is in the right-of-way. But technically, that, that storm sewer is not benefiting anyone other than these residents. So, that's why we ultimately ended up recommending in, in, when I, when I approached other departments, they all recommended to go with the SAD, with this, with this split. But yeah, originally, the discussions I had with the residents was more of a, more of a city share.
Counsel, do you have any? Yes?
Mr. Director, can you, so what the residents just asked, that they're saying their share of 42%, that's the SAD?
Their share right now is, is 85%. So, I think maybe earlier when we, when we discussed it, it came out to 42% at the beginning of our discussions. You know, when we looked at what was actually in the right-of-way versus what's in the, on private property.
And how much is it again?
It comes out to, it, it comes out to $18,600 per resident total. But then if they go, you know, for the installment plan, then that's about 20-
And is this payable over 10 years?
Yeah, over 10 years. It's 24, 25, 27 a year. So, that becomes $25,207.
Okay. All right.
But if they pay upfront, it's 18,600.
Okay.
And the, the city's already kicking in-
$27,000.
$27,000.
For the engineering costs.
$27,000, our share, and then each of the homeowners that's part of this assessment, they're kicking in just over $18,000.
Correct.
Okay. I'm good for now. I'm just adding up some stuff. I'm good, Mr. President.
Any other questions? Counsel Brown?
I do. We, we discussed this, maybe-
In the Neighborhood Services Committee, I believe, or the Finance Committee.
Finance, yes. Yeah, we, we took it out in the, we wanted to minimize this as much as possible to the residents. And that, that was, that was one of our charges there during the Finance Committee. And we, we drove that down to the most minimal amount as possible that would, do you recall that conversation we had? I mean, we, we wanted to make sure it, it was a minimal, minimum. It was that the interest rate we had, we drove down. What, what, and then that, that was the, that was the take from the Finance Committee, drive it down as what, limit, as limit, and put the minimum, minimal amount on the residents.
I mean, the interest rate is 6%, which is around what market rate is right now, right? That's where we came up with the 6%. But, but yeah, the rest of it is, you know, whatever is the actual responsibility of, you know, what the residents will be benefiting from, yes, we, we gave, we put it on the residents. But the city's bearing the cost of the engineering to, to, both the preliminary engineering, which is the design, plus the construction engineering, to ensure that this work happens according to city standards because then the city will take over maintenance of this infrastructure for the foreseeable future.
Okay.
So, if in, sorry, so if in 20 years, it turns out that it's not draining anymore, the city will come in and replace it at, at no cost anymore. Well, no cost to the residents.
Mr. Green?
Mr. President? If the Director, for clarification, could explain the cost breakdown and how it was computed, that would be helpful. Not necessarily the actual dollars, but at least the percentages or how they were determined.
Oh, the percentage, so, we had a, this is based on, you know, so, so this is based on a engineering estimate from our, from our consulting engineers. That was the, there's the, the construction cost, which is $148,802.50. And then there's the engineering cost for the design and the construction. And then there's the engineering cost for the design and the construction of twenty-seven thousand and fifty-five. And, uh, that's how we broke that up.
And the six percent came from where? Who came up with the interest?
Uh, that was, uh, I believe Treasury's recommendation, six percent. Fiscal, fiscal services.
And, you know, just for, for those, just a reminder, you know, this is, this is private property. This is a private sewer that we, through this process, will take over the ownership and maintenance of this private sewer. Um, we did talk about this at our meeting back on September eighth to set this public hearing. That's when we discussed it and, um, we, we said, you know, we're gonna kick in twenty-seven thousand dollars. The residents each have to pay eighteen thousand, they could pay a lump sum, they could pay interest. But what I'm hearing now is they may not want to pay that amount. So I guess my question would be to the city attorney, if they don't want to pay that, then we would not approve the SAD? Or do we still approve it because we still have another resolution to go? And I don't know if I'm understanding that correctly, that, you know, if, if the residents don't want us to move forward, that's where I'm, I'm confused.
I believe the residents still want the SAD, but they're requesting some relief on the amount.
Council President, I'm not sure about the, the question. Is it that you don't want to move forward with the SAD because a few of the residents don't want to pay the amount?
So I guess what, what I'm hearing is that they want to move forward, but they want additional relief.
Additional relief.
So what we're voting on this evening is Special Assessment Resolutions Number Three and Four, by saying it's a project of necessity and we're gonna get competitive bids. Now, we already, we've already gotten the competitive bids. So do they, they still have a chance or an opportunity with the city? If the City Council chooses to lower the cost to the residents at Special Assessment Resolution Number Five? Or are we set on the pricing now? You know, when, when this was discussed at length, I know that Finance and Abdul and City Administrator talked about this. This was the agreed amount, the agreed amount price that we were, that everyone agreed to share. So I just want to make sure that we, we all understand that.
Right.
We're, we're kind of now at a last minute, oh, we want some additional help.
Well, I have a question.
Yeah.
So when you say the, the we, is it we being we, the city said this is how much we're gonna pay, this is how much the homeowner's gonna pay? Or whether the homeowners have an opportunity to weigh in and say, we agree that we will take this amount?
So be, before this whole process, we did meet with the, uh, before we kicked off the SAD process, we met with the homeowners and, uh, agreed that we would go through with an SAD and gave them the approximate cost. Even this is here right now is an approximation, it's an estimate, um, based on, uh, engineering. But we still have to go out to bid, which if you approve this today, we'll go out to bid tomorrow or Wednesday. And, uh, before the, the final public hearing, we'll have, um, bids in hand to, to award to the low bidder, lowest qualified bidder. So this, 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 uh, price can still go down if the bids come in lower.
It could also go up.
Yes.
Right, and, and I believe that, um, we have a standard interest rate for SADs, um, which is what we're charging here. So I guess we can go out for bids, approve these, go out for bids, and at the next meeting, I guess, is the final decision, the homeowners can say yes or no, and we can move forward that way.
And the homeowners can always petition to cancel the SAD or to, to turn it down or, yeah, to cancel the SAD, basically.
But then you also mentioned there was one or two homeowners that didn't want it, but they're, because the majority of the homeowners for that private sewer wanted, we're still moving forward and that homeowner is still in that SAD, correct?
Right, so, you know, if, if, if one of those residents who did not sign, if they now submitted counter petition, that's a possibility.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, and, and I, I just want to state that during that discussion, the Treasury, there, Abdul, the city, the, the tenor of it, we wanted to, and I'm, and I don't have all the, the documents right here, I'm not, that we wanted to make sure this was as, 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 as soft on the homeowner as we possibly could make it. And I, I remember that just from a standpoint of, I kept asking, can we go in and, or in and, or to make this a palatable, uh,
Yeah, that's what...
To the homeowner, so that, this, this is the number that we came up with. And the, the, finally, the Treasury and the, everybody was in agreement. This was what we could afford, basically, there was home, you know, there, whenever you gotta spend money, there's harm to somebody. But this is, this was a no, our best, the best financial that we could, that we came up with that day, and it was no harm to him.
Right, and that, that's where we, that's where we came up with the ten-year payment plan.
Yeah, that's right, where we, we extended a year out, everything.
Correct, yes. I think typically it's five years, but we extended it out to ten years, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that's, that's the point I want to get across, this was pushed to be as...
Okay, so we'll move forward and see what the costs come back and... Any other questions, though?
We just want, to, to that point, why would we act without having the bids and, and to understand what the actual cost may be? Instead of using projected costs?
Because let's say the costs come in and it would cost each homeowner ten thousand dollars more, they may then say, we're not interested.
So shouldn't, to that point, shouldn't we wait until we know?
So the way this, the SAD process works is we're approving tonight for the city to go out and expend their resources to get the bids.
Okay, thank you, that, I got you.
Okay, yeah. Correct?
Council President, would you like to hear from me?
Sure.
You're, you're absolutely correct. The, um, what is presented in the council letter is a recommendation of suspected or anticipated costs. Uh, you're just approving, um, the, um, resolutions number three and four for the SAD project. Uh, and it doesn't have any figures, um, attended to that approval.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? If not, I'll accept a motion to, uh, adopt the standard special assessment resolutions, number three and four.
So moved?
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve, uh, to adopt the standard special amendment, assessment resolutions, number three and four, um, in connection with SS one-one-seven-seven, Coventry Woods Backyard Drainage Improvement, and declaring the project a necessity and authorizing the City Engineering Department to seek competitive bids. Um, and we are also setting October twenty-seventh as the date of the next hearing. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
October twenty-seventh? So our regular meeting in October? Okay. Next is a special use request, PSLU two-five dash zero-zero-zero-six of Allegra Marketing Print Mail to operate a reproduction and duplicating facility at two-four-four-seven-one West Ten Mile Road.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Would you like me to proceed?
Yes, oh, go ahead.
Um, and, uh, I want to give kudos to the petitioner for hanging in here for three and a half hours. But, um, the petitioner is Allegra Marketing. As you stated, uh, the address is two-four-four-seven-one West Ten Mile Road. Existing zoning is OS Office Service. They would like to operate a reproduction and duplicating facility with other complementary office services. Hours of operation, nine AM to five PM. They're relocating, um, from where the new car wash is being, so they, they had to find a new home. The current zoning is OS Office, future land use is local mixed use. There are no physical changes to the outside of the building, they're just gonna be occupying some space. Uh, this is an elevation facing south from Ten Mile Road, uh, facing west from the entrance lot. This is the interior floor plan, and, uh, this is typical of the, the, uh, types of business. Most of it is reproduction, copy machine, uh, for their marketing business. Uh, these are interior photos of their operation. And, uh, original, uh, site plan was approved in nineteen eighty-seven, but no physical changes to the exterior. And, um, I'd like to ask the petitioner come up, introduce themselves. They've been a long-time Southfield business, and, and maybe you can explain your operation, why you moved, and how many people you employ. Thank you.
If you could just give your name and address for the record, please.
Pardon?
If you give your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Anthony Martinico, uh, the owner of Allegra, uh, located at two-four-four-seven-one West Ten Mile Road. And, uh, as mentioned, we were, uh, basically forced to move because our landlord sold at our old location, we were at that location for forty years, uh, here in Southfield. And this building that we are now moving to, have moved to, uh, was really the perfect building site for us. Uh, we do provide marketing services, which is a professional service. But in addition to that, it, it also requires reproduction and duplicating services, which does require special, uh...
Special land use.
Special land, yeah, use approvals, and, uh, we're requesting that approval. Uh, without it, we would, we'd be decimated, uh, because we do have a ten-year lease that we signed. Um, so again, it's, uh, no, we don't really, you don't even know we're there. So we aren't affecting the building in any way. Uh, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, we'll have a public hearing and then we can ask, uh, we'll have questions then. All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, this is a public hearing for PSLU two-five dash zero-zero-zero-six, a special use request of Allegra Marketing Print and Mail to operate the reproduction and duplicating facility at two-four-four-seven-one West Ten Mile Road. If you wish to speak, please come up, give your name and address for the record, you have three minutes. All right, seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counsel, do you have any questions? Yes?
Not just, not a question, but just want to thank you for your patience and your support of being a, you know, a longstanding business owner in Southfield. You know, I, I know there's many other things you could have been doing tonight, and we appreciate your patience. Thank you.
I remember where you were before.
Would you mind coming up to the podium, just?
And use your services. Is this, you say this is a, because it looks like it's much, much larger than where you were before.
It, it is much larger, it's, uh, we, we occupied, actually, at the old location, there was three buildings there. One was LA Insurance, uh, that was part of that property that our landlord rented out. Uh, and there, the other two buildings we were in represented about twenty-eight hundred square feet. Uh, this building that we're in now, uh, is seven thousand square feet. Um, in the old building, we were very cramped, so it really gives us just a lot more space, one to grow the business and, and one, and also just to give us more space to do our work.
Okay, and what, what, what services, uh, are you adding services on, or what type are you doing large?
No, no, we, we do, um, well, marketing services. And part of marketing services entails, uh, we have Xerox machines for duplicating digital images. Uh, that could be, you know, pamphlets, booklets, um, we, we do signage.
Okay.
Uh, we have equipment for doing signage on different types of substrate. Uh, we also do mailings for our customers, again, getting, for brand awareness.
Right.
Uh, so we'll send out whatever the, the mailing theme is, uh, to whatever locations they're going to.
All right, what are your hours of operation?
Uh, nine to five.
Nine to five?
Uh, uh, it's nine to five-thirty.
Uh, if, uh, Monday through Friday or Saturday?
Monday through Friday, yeah.
No Saturdays?
Yeah, no, we're closed on the weekends.
Okay, Monday, Friday. And how soon will you be running, up and running?
Pardon me?
How soon will you be up and running?
Well, we, as I, uh, we, we had to move out, we, we've been, uh, we moved into this location in December of twenty-twenty-four, so we've been there for nine months now.
On Timon? On Timon, you've been there for nine months?
Yeah.
I live right around the corner, that's why I was asking. Like, I don't remember you being there, okay, well, thank you, so just wanted to, thank you very much.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
So I just, um, through the chair, here's the recommended resolution, and you stated you're open to five-thirty? Okay, so I just want to make a correction on the hours of operation, Monday through Friday, nine AM to five-thirty PM. Otherwise, that's our recommended resolution.
The chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve PSLU twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-six, the special use request for Allegra Marketing Print Mail with the recommended correction per the planner.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve PSLU two-five dash zero-zero-six with the correction to the hours of operation as noted. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, our last public hearing for this evening.
Here, I'll sit, thank you. Yes, uh, through the chair, uh, PD, PTZA twenty-five dash zero-zero-zero-four. It's a text amendment to amend Title V, Zoning and Planning, Chapter Forty-five, uh, to amend Article Two, Section five-point-three, Article Seven, Section five-point-eight-four, Article Eight, Section five-point-nine-four, Article Nine, Section five-point-one-zero-three, Article Fourteen, Section five-point-one-three-three, Article Fifteen, Sections five-point-one-three-nine and five-point-one-four-zero, Article Seventeen, Section five-point-one-five-eight, Article Eighteen, Section five-point-one-six-eight, to provide a definition for adult day services and to add the use to the use of lists for RM, RMM, RMU, OS, RS, RC, B-two, and B-three zoning districts. Uh, so, uh, sometimes they're referred to as adult daycare, adult health programs. We're, um, providing as a permit of special use of various zoning districts. Adult day services are defined as care provided for any part of a day, but not less, but less than twenty-four hours to functionally and cognitively impaired adult persons. It is provided through a structured program of social and rehabilitative and/or maintenance services in support, in a supportive group setting, other than a participant's home. And, um, the city has a growing aging population. There's a greater need, uh, for residents with disabilities who may benefit from adult day services. Planning Department fields multiple inquiries per year for adult services, uh, adult day services, and has been dealing with them as an interpretation similar to childcare centers and facilities for human care. And since this is likely to continue being a use that is demand for foreseeable future, we want to expressly permit it going forward. We want to, um, these are consistent in our master plan, goals and objectives. And, uh, here's the addition to the definitions to clarify adult day services. And then we've added it to specific, um, regulations that are compatible. And just go through those. And just go through those lists as I had indicated. So with that, we request a public hearing on this matter. Be happy to answer any questions afterwards.
Okay. We will now have a public hearing for this zoning text amendment, PTZA 25-0004. Just... Everyone just saw the presentation. If you have any comments, please come to the podium. You have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record. All right. Seeing no one, the public hearing is closed. Council?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve PTZ 25-0004, text amendment to amend Title V, Zoning and Planning, Chapter 45, zoning of the code of the City of Southfield by amending Article II, Section 5.3, Article VII, Section 5.84, Article VIII, Section 5.94, Article IX, Section... Want me to read all this?
You don't have to. If you want to.
That's okay.
Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve PTZA 25-0004. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Through the chair? Through the chair, we need ordinance number...
Right.
Yeah.
1817.
Is that 1817?
Yes.
Thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I move that we introduce ordinance number 1817.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to introduce ordinance number 1817. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Planner.
1814?
1817.
181... Okay.
All right. We are now up to the council portion of the meeting. Councilwoman Hoag, do you have any comments?
No.
Councilman Hicks?
Nothing. Thank you.
Councilwoman Haynes?
Yes. I just wanted to make an announcement about a few things. Sunday, the 5th, is the Domestic Violence Walk that the chief of the Southfield Police Department puts on. A walk to raise awareness of domestic violence. I want to just say Domestic Violence Walk. And that's this Sunday from 11:00 to 2:00. And this week coming also is the book sale at the Friends of the Library, Southfield Public Library, bookshelf at the library. And also, I just want to speak to... When somebody comes up here and says some things, I think we need to really get the facts straight. And no, when they talk about the communication, we didn't address the individual that came up here and said something in reference to what happened at the Weston Hotel. I think that we need to be on record to state that that was handled by the Southfield Police Department. And they did an excellent job in handling that. And the residents will look and check the facts on that. That is nothing we had no involvement in. And there's the resolution from that is still with the police department. I would urge our residents to follow up. If they have any questions, call the chief. He'll be more than happy to explain that because sometime when you put things out there like that, you know, it just goes to lay blame, and it's not really facts or truth. And that's some of the things we want to... I would like to see dispelled about that because that was a parent and a child involvement, and it was a real serious matter, but it had nothing to do with us as a council. And I think people need to check facts when people put statements out there like that. Just check facts and you'll get the truth. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Given the lateness of time and given the fact that we've endured enough tonight, I have no comments. Thank you.
Okay. On Thursday, October 7th, I believe, the... Nope. October 9th, the councils invited to give help, award the photo prize awards that evening. I believe it's at 6:00 p.m. here in the chambers, Thursday, October 9th. Other than that, it is... It is late. We have been here a while. I think everything has been said. Mr. Deputy City Administrator?
Good evening. The administration has nothing to add.
Sorry?
We have nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Attorney?
Good evening. We have nothing to add.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Council President. Quickly, I'll add that last week, the clerk's office mailed out our absentee ballots to our voters. So if you're watching, please look for them in the mail and consider the candidates who are running. And also, I just appreciate the words that Councilman Haynes spoke this evening. Our council people do care and care very deeply. And it is a sacrifice. And thank you for so many people coming to share their concerns tonight. It's very... Not disheartening, but heartening. And I want to just say that as we educate ourselves on the council races, the clerk race, which does have two write-in declared candidates as well as the person whose name is appearing on the ballot, just really research your candidate races this year. They're very important and crucial to the operation of our city.